Can I get started? Thank you. Very good. Welcome. This is a meeting of the Glendale Water and Power Commission. My name is Manuel Camargo. Today is October 16, 2007, and this is a special meeting of the Glendale Water and Power Commission. So with that, Madam Clerk, first item.
One, roll call. President Camargo.
Here.
Commissioner Venesian.
Here.
Commissioner Hale.
Here.
Commissioner Lau.
Here.
Commissioner Kadikian.
Here.
Very good, thank you. Next item, please.
Two, reports information to A, committee meeting regarding the draft environmental impact project Grayson Repowering Project.
Mr. President.
Very good, yes.
Members of the Commission, and staff, and members of the public, before we start on this item, I wanted to, just for the benefit of the many members of the public that are here that might not be familiar with the Glendale Water and Power Commission, and as well as for our Commission, because this meeting is structured a little bit differently than our typical meeting, I just wanted to explain a little bit about the Commission and how the meeting will work today. So first, to the members of the public, this Commission, the Glendale Water and Power Commission, is a commission made up of volunteers, residents of the city of Glendale, who give their time to serve on this advisory commission, to represent the city, and to learn about the operations of Glendale Water and Power, and to make recommendations to the city manager and to the city council. So they're here today, like yourselves, to learn a little bit more about the Grayson Repowering Project and the draft environmental impact report. So unlike a typical commission meeting, this is a community meeting where we have invited members of the public to come and provide comments on the draft environmental impact report. And the way that the meeting is going to be structured today is that we'll have a presentation from staff regarding the draft environmental impact report. Then we'll have the commissioners ask any questions they may have regarding the draft environmental impact report and the presentation. And then we'll turn it over to the public to provide any comments that you may have regarding the draft environmental impact report. And as you may have noticed, we do have a court reporter present today who's recording comments and recording the meeting. And this is because we want to make sure that we accurately capture any comments that are made, so that we can collect them, and then, as part of our environmental impact report record, respond to them in the final environmental impact report. So I would encourage anyone that wishes to speak to submit a comment card. There's blue cards in the back of the room for anyone that does not already have one. And please do identify which item on the agenda you wish to speak on. So we do have item 2A, which pertains to the draft environmental impact report. There's also oral communications on the agenda. Oral communications would have to do with anything on the agenda that is not part of the draft environmental impact report, the agendized items, so it'd be on other topics. But if you wish to speak regarding the Grayson Repowering Draft Environmental Impact Report, then you would put down 2A as the item you wish to speak on. I want to make it clear that this is not the last opportunity to submit comments regarding the draft environmental impact report. There is a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, October 19, at 6:00 PM at the Grayson Power Plant, so that's another opportunity to provide verbal comments. But you may also submit written comments, whether tonight or later in writing, and those would go to Eric Kraus in the Planning Department. And we'll put up a slide in a little bit that will have his information, so that you know how to submit those comments. And those would need to be submitted by November 3. So please make sure and comment if you have any comments on the project. Tonight's meeting is not meant to approve the project or to make a decision about the project, but just to capture comments regarding the draft environmental impact report. The project will ultimately go to the city council for certification of the final environmental impact report. And so any comments that are made tonight will be collected and will be responded to in the final environmental impact report. And members of the public are welcome to come to that public meeting of the city council and also make any comments regarding the project. So we're pleased to see everyone here today, and if there are any questions about the format, I'm happy to answer those, but...
Is that the city council meeting at which the final EIR will be considered? Has that been agendized? And if so, do you have that date?
That has not been agendized yet. We don't have the date for that, but I believe that will be in early next year.
Okay. I have no questions about that. I'll say a few things before we start with oral communication, but I think first up, we'll go with item 2A.
2A, committee meeting regarding the draft environmental impact report Grayson Repower Project, staff presentation regarding draft environmental impact report.
You put the item up. Put it on the screen. While that comes up, there is some additional seating up front, so if you folks would rather not sit, we appreciate you being here in order to participate in public dialogue. So please make yourselves comfortable. Mr. Zern?
There's also seating downstairs, and there's a full screen down there as well. And then come back up when it's comment period if they want to be more comfortable.
Very good. Okay. Appreciate that.
Let's go to the next slide, Catalina, please. So, Mr. President, members of the Commission, just some very brief background. I'm going to turn this over to the, our expert staff, environmental staff, to give you the full presentation. But this is just more or less for background purposes. Glendale Water and Power, generally responsible for the electrical demand of approximately 88,000 electric customers. We serve the entire city. Our peak demand, which we just upped this year as a result of a warm Labor Day weekend, is 350 megawatts. That's an important number. Always the peak in an electrical utility is an important number to remember. Okay. Now, in putting this together, we started nearly three years ago, with first discussions and then an integrated resource plan that we put together as the planning mechanism, planning tool, the roadmap, if you will, for where we were going with regards to our power supply for the next 20 years. That document was modeled after what would the current legislation at that time, which was SB 350, and which is the legislation, the law of the land, if you will, when it comes to renewable energy. So that RIP is based on that legislation. And then, just in anything we do in GWP, but especially in this particular exercise, we look at some very core issues in how we look at projects, we look at service delivery. One is reliability, first and foremost. A concept, I think, that most folks who may not be familiar with the electrical utility business realize it's a lot more involved than you would think. It's incumbent upon us, not just as a, from a customer service perspective, but from a legal perspective, to ensure that we have the proper structures in place to ensure reliable delivery of electricity. Rate impact, always a major concern. So we look at anything that we do from an economic standpoint, and then that is boiled down to what is going to face the ratepayers, our customers, the citizens of the city, for both business and residents. So that is something that is of utmost importance to us when we look at anything. And then certainly in making sure that we comply with all legislative and regulatory mandates that are out there. And in California, we have a very aggressive slate of regulatory mandates for the environment and the good of the environment, whether it's electrical, water, wastewater, whatever it may be. And certainly, we are abiding by all of those. And then the last bullet we have there is just overall environmental enhancement. Some of that is associated with the regulatory compliance, but also it's just the concept of having a more environmentally sensitive portfolio package in all that we do. Sustainability is an issue we look at in anything we do in GWP. What you see up there are some numbers. This is our last annual report that we did for 2016, and so you can see from our portfolio, eligible renewables, this is a one-year snapshot, mind you. And keep in mind that state law is, looks at long-term contracts of 10 years or more. So this includes for us in one particular year, not only our long-term contracts, but also our purchases, day-to-day purchases for the year. So eligible renewables, we had 47%. Another 10% in large hydro. We segregated that, because as you may know, we are an original member of Hoover Dam, and Hoover is not an eligible renewable project under the RPS. However, it is a carbon-free project. And so that is total 100% carbon-free energy that we derive from being a member of Hoover. We have other carbon-free, 7%. Again, it's not RPS-eligible, but it is carbon-free. I say that only because that discussion was taken up in earnest this year in Sacramento, talking about not just renewable energy, but also carbon-free energy, and blending the two together. That actually was a proposal, which I'm sure we'll see again next legislative session. And then other sources of our energy come from a variety of non-renewable. We still have some coal in our portfolio, although we are moving away from that. We have some other fossil fuel sources as well, and that makes up the 36% of the remainder of our portfolio. And our total electric use in Glendale, as of last year, or last year's number, was 1.1 million megawatts. So with that, I'm going to have Mr. Weber, Mike Weber, come up. He is part of, most of the people in the first couple of rows here, a phenomenal team we put together to put this project in motion. And Mike is heading up the environmental review part of that, and so he's going to go through his presentation to you and may likely bring up some of his subject matter experts to help him as well. So with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening. As Steve mentioned, my name is Michael Weber. I work for Stan Tech Consulting as a principal scientist. I'm a consultant to the city of Glendale, assisting with the California Environmental Quality Act compliance for the project. I want to thank the commissioners for inviting the project team in this evening to share some information to you and give you a little bit more background, as well as members of the public who are here tonight. Thank you for your participation. We look forward to hearing your comments as well. As Steve mentioned, we do have some panelists here, our subject matter experts, who were involved in preparation of the environmental impact report. When we get to the question and answer session with the Commission, they may be more adept at answering some of your questions, and I may invite them to come on up. Oops, sorry. So this is a simplified schematic of Glendale Water and Power's electrical system. And it shows all the inputs to the system. It's kind of hard to see this green dot here on the screens, but up towards the top, you're going to see all of the inputs from outside of the area that come into the generation system. You've got power coming from the Hoover Dam, San Juan Power Project, Inner Mountain Power Project, and some others that are outside of California that all tie into the Southwest Area Transmission System. There's also renewable energy and large hydro contracts that also go into the Southwest Area Transmission System, as well as the D.C.-Pacific Intertie. Those are the only two main transmission lines into the city, and also those feed right into Los Angeles Department of Water and Power's transmission system, and then into the Glendale Water and Power Transmission System. Glendale also has a share from the Burbank Water and Power Magnolia Power Plant. That also goes into the GWP Transmission System. The Grayson Power Plant, that is the local generation source, goes right into the GWP Distribution System. We have a proposed biogas generation project that may add an additional 12 megawatts of capacity that would go directly into the GWP Distribution System. And there is some rooftop solar throughout the city that also goes into that distribution system. The entire load, electrical load demand from the city, is pulled off of that GWP Distribution System. So in that lower left-hand corner, those boxes, Glendale residents and Glendale businesses over the 88,000 customers that Steve mentioned are all pulling off of that system. This shows all of the sources of electrical to the city. Got the local generation, that is 267 megawatts from the Grayson Power Plant, and then the import capacity of GWP, which is 100 megawatts on the Pacific-D.C. Intertie that goes up towards the Pacific Northwest, 100 megawatts on the Southwest AC Transmission System. That's the other line that kind of goes out of state in the Nevada, New Mexico, Utah area. Glendale Water and Power can get 100 megawatts off of that system, and then also the 39 megawatts allocation from the Magnolia Power Plant. So that dictates a maximum electrical capacity of Glendale Water and Power of 506 megawatts. Want to stress that these are also expressed in net megawatts, not gross megawatts. Little history on the Grayson Power Plant. It has been here since 1941, faithfully serving the community of Glendale. The reliability, efficiency, and cost-effectiveness of that existing facility has steadily declined due to the age of the equipment and normal degradation. So now at Grayson, it is experiencing an increasing frequency in unplanned enforced outages of generation capacity. I'll talk about the existing generation units for a minute at Grayson right now. There is Unit 1, a steam turbine generator, 18 megawatts. Another one, another 18 megawatts. Got Unit 3, a steam boiler turbine generator at 18 megawatts. Unit 4, steam boiler turbine generator at 42 megawatts. Unit 5, a steam boiler turbine generator, an additional 42 megawatts. Unit 8A, a gas turbine generator, which is a combined-cycle plant, at 26 megawatts. Unit 8B/C, another gas turbine generator combined-cycle plant, at 55 megawatts. And Unit 9, a gas turbine generator, simple-cycle unit, at 48 megawatts. You can see the years that all of those units were installed and their current age. Total generating capacity of 267 megawatts from Grayson. And this highlights the yellow, every unit that is highlighted, which is every single one except for Unit 9, has surpassed the average retirement age of that equipment, which is typically about 40 years for combustion turbines and 54 years for steam boilers. So you can see all of those except for 1 are far past their retirement age. Generation units except for Unit 9 are beyond their retirement age. They are inefficient and higher air emissions compared to more modern turbines, declining reliability due to those increasing and unplanned forced outages, getting much more difficult to maintain and get parts for that equipment. And Units 1 through 8 are expected to fail in early 2020s and no longer be operable and unfeasible to continue to maintain. Want to talk for a minute about the electrical capacity for Glendale Water and Power under the no project. What happens if we do not repower Grayson? And we talked about the sources that are available. We've just got the 200 megawatts over the transmission lines, the 39 megawatts locally from Magnolia, 48 megawatts from Unit 9 that would stay at Grayson because that unit is only 14 years old now and can continue to operate for a number of additional years. So 287 megawatts total without Units 1 through 8. So what is the outlook without Grayson and not having that additional capacity? We're going to spend a minute on this. This is a graph that really shows the monthly maximum, peak, average, and the minimum loads of Glendale Water and Power's electrical system. This data is from three years and is averaged over each month of those three-year periods. So that black line, which is up at the top, oops, sorry, hit the wrong button there. The black line at the top dictates that 287 megawatts that's available capacity without Grayson. The middle or lower black line there is 187 megawatts. What that represents is the available capacity of Glendale Water and Power after the loss of what is referred to as the single largest contingency. What that means in the definition at the bottom of the slide here is that there may be a planned, unexpected failure of any electrical component in the system. Reliability requirements mandated by both the federal and state government make sure that Glendale Water and Power can have reserves in place to cover the loss of that single largest contingency to make sure that the power delivered is reliable to its customers. For Glendale Water and Power, the single largest contingency is 100 megawatts over the Pacific-D.C. Intertie line. The other line, the Southwest line, that also has 100 megawatts, that is not the single largest contingency because it is actually made up of three other lines. It is not just one line itself. So with the loss of that D.C.-Intertie line, we drop 100 megawatts in our availability to serve the customer base. That's pretty important because now we're down to 187 megawatts, and you can see that lower black line is below not only a large portion of the monthly maximum peak loads, but it is also below even the monthly maximum average load. What that is showing is that under that scenario, Glendale Water and Power would not have sufficient capacity to serve the peak load, and if the loss of the single largest contingency occurred, you would be in even far worse shape. Going to look at the power or electrical capacity deficit under that no project alternative. Steve mentioned in his introductory remarks that the peak demand on Glendale's system is 350 megawatts total. So with our transmission capabilities, we can bring in a total of 239 megawatts. That represents the allocation on the 200-megawatt lines plus the 39 megawatts from Magnolia Power Plant. Minus the single largest contingency, we're only able to deliver 139 megawatts. So 350 megawatts to meet the peak load, minus what we're able to bring in on transmission and the allocation from Magnolia, minus the single largest contingency, we have a deficit of 211 megawatts. There are also some additional reliability requirements in fulfilling Glendale Water and Power's obligation under the Balancing Authority with Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, that GWP also needs to be able to have an additional reserve capacity to make up for the reserve that was used to cover the single largest contingency. For that, that means we have another combined-cycle unit at 71 megawatts that serves as that additional reserve capacity to make up for the reserves we use for the single largest contingency. That essentially means that our total additional capacity needed to meet the demand and the reliability requirements is a total of 282 megawatts. I'm going to briefly talk about what the proposed project is and what is the repowering. So essentially, that would be removing old units, 1 through 8, from the existing power plant site, and putting new, more modern, repowered units that are more efficient and reliable, and actually create less emissions on a megawatt-per-hour basis of electricity produced, and will actually use less potable water. And we'll talk about some of those things when we get into the environmental impact summary as well. And really, this project is sized per the Integrated Resource Plan. Would replace 219 megawatts of existing capacity with 262 megawatts of more efficient generation. The four new generation units that would replace, I believe it is the seven generation units, 1 through 8, considering 8 to be joint, is two 71-megawatt combined-cycle units and two 60-megawatt simple-cycle units. For those that may not be familiar with the terms of the power generation industry, simple-cycle units essentially combust natural gas through a turbine to generate electricity. They can come up to speed and ramp up very quickly. And the simple, excuse me, the combined-cycle units, those also combust natural gas in a generator, in a turbine, to produce electricity, but they also then take that waste heat from the exhaust and use that to generate steam and put the steam through a steam turbine generator to produce additional electricity, more efficient. You get a little bit more electricity out of those. They just take a little bit longer to ramp up, but once they're going, they are much more efficient. Also, some ancillary facilities such as cooling towers, some gas compressors, a new switchyard, and plant operations building. The Unit 9, that is only 14 years old, a 48-megawatt simple-cycle unit commissioned in 2003, would continue to remain in service. That unit would remain in service during the demolition and construction period of the repowering project as well. Okay, comparison, side by side, of what would be proposed for decommissioning or removal on the left, and also the proposed replacement on the right. Again, removing a total generation capacity of 219 megawatts and replacing that with 262 megawatts. That would result in an additional generating capacity at the Grayson Power Plant of a total of 43 megawatts. Do want to note that that is less than the 50-megawatt threshold that the California Energy Commission takes for the siting of new power plants or increasing generating capacity at existing plants. So that is why the city of Glendale is a lead sequoia agency for this project. Do want to note that all of these megawatts are expressed in average annual outputs or capacities. And what typically happens is when weather gets really hot, the generating capacity of these units is actually reduced, and the demand for electricity actually increases. So that's a complicating factor. Do want to go back real quick. 262 megawatts is what we are replacing, again, with the existing Unit 9 at 48 megawatts. The Grayson Power Plant would have a total generating capacity of 310 megawatts. It's a graphic that just shows the Grayson Power Plant site. The area in the outline red is what is referred to as the Utility Operations Center. The area that is designated by yellow is the actual Grayson Power Plant site itself. All of the activities that we're generally talking about for the Grayson Repowering are within that yellow area. This is a graphic that shows the proposed demolition plan within that area. Essentially, everything that is highlighted in yellow here are existing facilities that would be removed, although this pointer doesn't work well. Down on the lower right-hand side that is not highlighted in red is the existing Unit 9 site. Project objectives, very important for us. I do want to note that these are abbreviated from the draft environmental impact report. They are not word-for-word in here, and those are in Section 2.4 of the draft environmental impact report, if anyone wants to see the full text. But essentially, what the objectives are is to provide sufficient capacity and energy to make sure that Glendale Water and Power can provide reliable service at all times for the city, including meeting peak load, support the city's requirements for renewable energy resources, meeting the reliability requirements and the load balancing obligations that Glendale has, minimizing the reliance on importing power over the transmission lines, which are very limited and congested, utilizing current and reliant technology to meet those needs, maintaining a reasonable cost of generation to minimize the impact on ratepayers and Glendale Water and Power customers, and supporting water conservation efforts by eliminating the use of potable water for generation purposes. We started this environmental review process towards the end of 2016. We did prepare what is referred to as an initial study and issued a notice of preparation for a draft environmental impact report. That initial study is helpful in terms of taking a preliminary look at all of the different resource categories that are mandated to be evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as getting comments from agencies, stakeholders, and members of the public as to what things they think we should be evaluating within that draft environmental impact report. The conclusions of the initial study were that the categories on the left, which included aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gases, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation and traffic, and tribal cultural resources, warranted further study, had the potential to result in environmental impacts and would be analyzed further within the draft environmental impact report. That initial study concluded that there would either be less-than-significant impacts or no impacts to all of the other resource categories on the right, and that they did not warrant further analysis within the draft environmental impact report. And I am not going to read through those, but they are right there for you. I do want to note that that initial study is included in the draft environmental impact report as Appendix A. Also want to note, as part of that initial study, we did a historic resource evaluation and historic architecture evaluation of the existing Grayson Power Plant to look at the structures and the buildings there, to see if any of them could be considered eligible for listing in both the federal, state, or local criteria for eligibility of historic resources. And the conclusions were that none of those are eligible, so that are less-than-significant impact with demolishing those from a historic resource perspective. Purposes of the draft environmental impact report, really to evaluate the potential environmental impacts of the project, inform the agency decision-makers and public of what those potential environmental impacts may be, identify possible ways to minimize or avoid potentially significant impacts, identify mitigation measures that could feasibly do that. significant impacts, identify mitigation measures that could feasibly do that, also look at alternatives that may avoid or significantly reduce environmental impacts of the proposed project, and also disclose to the public any required agency approvals of the project. CEQA review process, public participation process, as Steve and Christine had mentioned, there are a number of ways to become involved. That started with the initial study and notice of preparation, which also triggered a 30-day public review and comment period for that document. We held two public scoping meetings. I think that was probably right at the beginning of 2017, that members of the public could come and ask or comment on anything they thought we should be evaluating and considering in that draft EIR. We had the notice of completion and availability of the draft environmental impact report that just recently went out, that also initiated an additional 45-day public review period that ends on November 3rd, and we are soliciting written comments from that and also tonight and Thursday night, oral comments. So in addition, tonight, we will be having a very similar meeting, albeit with the exception of not briefing the commission, but we'll also be taking public comments on the 19th as well. Once we do that, we're going to take all the comments we've received. We are going to address those comments, respond to them in writing within the final environmental impact report that will be considered for certification by the City Council. And we are going to spend a few brief moments talking about some of the environmental impacts of the proposed project that are in the draft environmental impact report. Forgive me, I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. There's obviously a very thorough environmental analysis that was done. It's literally over 5,000 pages, so we're going to kind of summarize some of this, what the key areas we looked at, what the results were, any mitigation measures as well. That will hopefully help frame some of the comments that we received tonight and also educate everybody here about what the impacts were. So for the aesthetics and visual resources, we looked at largely the project's potential to degrade the existing visual character of the site and its surroundings. Looked at both construction and operation. For construction, we really looked at the visibility of construction activities and some of the lay-down areas that would be utilized, because the period of demolition is nine months. Construction is expected to last just over two years, so they're going to be there for quite a while. Most of these activities will be taking place within the Grayson Power Plant boundaries. There is a large 12-foot masonry-style wall that surrounds a good portion of that as well, so a lot of the activities in there will not be visible, but things that are at elevations or in some of the staging areas could be visible. So looked at that and concluded that there could be a potentially significant impact for those areas and that that could be mitigated to a less than significant area by screening, essentially putting the visibility screening fabrics around those areas to make them less visible to the public. And then predominantly, a lot of the analysis focused on what the operational impacts could be. How different would the repowering project look from the existing power plant and would that have a significant aesthetic or visual impact or not? So again, want to do note that there is the existing power plant there that does have some degree of visual impact to it already. What we did for that is we looked at, kind of conducted a viewshed analysis to determine which areas the power plant could be visible from, identified a range of candidate key observation points based on that viewshed analysis, and then narrowed that down to five key observation points that had the most representative or sensitive views for detailed analysis within that environmental impact report. We collected base photography from each one of those key observation points, essentially looking at what the existing view was. We created a model and photo simulations for the proposed repowering project and did comparative summaries that looked at what it looks like today versus what it would look like after the repowering project. We used a Federal Highway Administration Visual Assessment Method that is very common for these types of projects. It is used by California Energy Commission regularly for the siting of power plant projects and takes away some of the subjectivity that we have in aesthetic analysis that looks at elements of visual quality, unity, intactness, vividness. And this is an assessment that is typically utilized in urban environments like this project is. So it follows a very robust and standardized approach for looking at those potential aesthetic impacts. And the conclusion of that analysis is that the visual quality at each key observation point would remain the same and less than significant impacts would result. There are some plots that we have in the back here that actually show what it looks like today. The one that is further towards the back of the room is a photograph of the existing Grayson Power Plant. The one on the left is a 3D model of what it would look like with the Grayson Repowering Air quality. Predominantly looked at whether or not this project would adversely and significantly impact air quality. The method that we used to do so was using the South Coast Air Quality Management District's Air Quality Analysis Handbook and thresholds of significance. This is something that South Coast Air Quality Management District looks at for all projects that have to go under CEQA compliance within their jurisdiction. Our project is within their jurisdiction. They have a very standardized approach for analyzing these potential environmental impacts. For construction, we estimated all of the air emissions using a model called CAL EMOD. Stands for the California Emissions Estimator Model. It is a statewide model that has been put together and is really supported by all the air districts across California, including South Coast Air Quality Management District. This is the model that they recommend for quantifying and evaluating the significance of construction-related impacts. After quantification of those impacts, we compared those to the mass daily emissions threshold of significance that South Coast Air Quality Management District uses. Those emissions are below the thresholds and are less than significant. Glendale Water and Power has made a commitment to reduce air emissions, even though they're already considered to be less than significant, through, there's really a lot of fugitive dust control requirements that South Coast Air Quality Management District mandates, but beyond that, Glendale Water and Power has committed to using what we refer to as Tier 2 and Tier 3 internal combustion engines for equipment, depending on the horsepower of the size, which is typically cleaner than the standardized equipment. So the emissions will actually be even lower, even though they're already below the threshold of significance. Just want to talk real quick about some of what the sources of those emissions are. We've got exhaust from the off-road construction equipment and vehicles, got fugitive dust from material movement, grading operations, site preparation, and then a lot of on-road mobile equipment associated with workers and equipment deliveries as well, potentially some off-gas volatile organic compounds through the application of architectural coatings, paints, asphalt, those types of things. For the operations side, we're going to have natural gas combustion generation equipment, so there will be some exhaust associated with that equipment that does have emissions of criteria air pollutants. Again, South Coast Air Quality Management District has a method by which to evaluate those. We actually drafted up our method that it was consistent with their policies and guidelines, met with them, had them review and approve the methods to confirm that indeed those are consistent with how they would like to see those impacts analyzed. And that is exactly how we did it. We had concurrence from them. There are a lot of rules and regulations that apply to some of these sources of air emissions. That includes a South Coast Air Quality Management District issuing permits to construct and permits to operate for all this equipment. Those applications have already been submitted to South Coast Air Quality Management District. They have been deemed complete and they are currently reviewing those applications. Some main points I would make for some of the rule compliance is requiring what is referred to as best available control technology for the generation units, essentially having to meet the most stringent emissions that can be met industry-wide for those types of units, as well as having to offset increases in pollutant emissions. So those emissions from plant operation were estimated by a range of emission factors, both on the best available control technology limits, manufacturer guarantee limits on some of the equipment, as well as a range of other California Air Resources Board and U.S. EPA emission factors. We also did dispersion modeling and health risk assessment as well. The dispersion modeling followed the AIRMOD methodology or guidelines, really a model, and the health risk assessment was performed using BREEZE AIRMOD and also the California Air Resources Board Hot Spots Analysis Reporting Program that is in accordance with South Coast Air Quality Management District guidelines. We looked at both maximum individual cancer rates as well as non-carcinogenic effects, both acute and non-chronic health impacts. The conclusions of all those analyses showed that the mass emissions are below the South Coast Air Quality Management District's threshold of significance after the application of the required offsets. Their dispersion modeling showed that the project would not exceed or substantially contribute to an exceedance of any ambient air quality standard, both federal or state. And the health risk assessment demonstrated that all of the potential health effects, both carcinogenic and non-carcinogenic, are below established South Coast Air Quality Management District thresholds of significance. Also want to note that South Coast Air Quality Management District is considered a responsible agency under the California Environmental Quality Act. Issuance of their permits for the project are considered as discretionary action. They cannot issue those permits without having verified that CEQA has been fully complied with. They will be relying on certification of this EIR to issue those permits. As part of that process, they will be reviewing and commenting on the adequacy of the air quality and the greenhouse gas emissions analysis. Geology and soils. We predominantly looked at the potential to expose people or structures to potential substantial adverse effects from geologic hazards. We did perform a geotechnical investigation. I'm going to share with you some of the more salient features of the results of that. The project site is not within an Alquist Priolo Fault Zone. It is within a liquefaction hazard zone. There are some nearby faults. The nearest one is 1.7 miles from the project, named the Verdugo Fault. The next closest is at 3.4 miles, the Santa Monica Fault. Those are both active faults capable of generating a magnitude of 6.9 and 7.4 magnitude earthquakes, There's a low to moderate potential for surface rupture, but there could be strong ground shaking during moderate to severe earthquakes. In terms of addressing some of these geologic hazards, these are generally hazards that are pretty common throughout Southern California. But that geotechnical study really looked at those site-specific conditions as well. It made a number of recommendations in terms of project design to address both the seismic and the liquefaction hazards. And want to note that there are a lot of applicable building codes that address these very geologic hazards, including the Uniform Building Code, California Building Code, and City of Glendale has a Building and Safety Code as well. So all of those codes where relevant in terms of these geologic hazards will be fully complied with, and those are all noted in our geotechnical investigation as well. One note in terms of earthquake is the Grayson Power Plant was operating in 1971 during the Silmar earthquake, and because of Glendale's ability to have local generation, Grayson was able to self-start and get the Glendale system back up to speed and delivering electricity before any of the neighboring communities, and that was a big benefit. Greenhouse gases. We did look at the potential to impact global climate change or conflict with applicable plans or policies related to global climate change and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. South Coast Air Quality Management District has a threshold of significance at 10,000 metric tons a year for industrial sources. And there is also the cap and trade regulation that is part of Assembly Bill 32 and the allowance and potential purchase of offsets for greenhouse gas emissions. Glendale Water and Power and the Grayson Power Plant are subject to those cap and trade regulations. Any net increase of those GHG emissions from the combustion equipment and transformers have to be offset for a cap and trade. And because of that, after the regulatory required allowances or offsets, those emissions, both during construction and operation, are below the South Coast Air Quality Management District thresholds of significance and are therefore a less than significant impact. As you'll hear as we move forward and talk about particularly some of the alternatives, that this project really helps to facilitate compliance with the renewable energy requirements that are mandated for Glendale and the state. And this repowered project would actually have a reduced greenhouse gas emissions on a pound per megawatt hour generated compared to the existing project based on the efficiency and cleaner burning generation units. Hazards and hazardous materials. Predominantly focused on the project's potential to create a significant hazard to the public or the environment through the use or accidental release of hazardous materials. Again, focused our evaluation both on construction and operation of the facility. Did an inventory of hazardous materials currently at the Grayson Repowering Project through a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. Based on the results of that Phase 1 environmental site assessment, there were some recognized environmental conditions that warranted further study. We conducted a Phase 2 environmental site assessment that included the collection of subsurface soil and groundwater samples. We also conducted a lead and asbestos survey of the existing facility. The conclusion of those studies were there are some pockets of subsurface soil and groundwater impacts below the site. Based on the depths of soil disturbance, we will likely encounter some petroleum-impacted soils during site demolition and construction. We do not anticipate encountering or disturbing the groundwater. Piles that are driven for the project foundation may go into that groundwater, but we are not going to be handling that groundwater nor have any need to. The asbestos and lead could impact worker health and the surrounding public if it is not adequately controlled. There are a range of federal, state, and local requirements related to handling those materials to ensure that workers are not exposed and that those materials do not enter the environment where the environment could be affected or members of the public as well. As a requirement of the project and mitigation, there's already a soil management plan that has been prepared and is attached to the draft EIR. The demolition and contractors, demolition and construction contractors, excuse me, will be required to adhere to that soil management plan. They will also be required to develop an asbestos and lead management plan that follows all of the federal, state, and local requirements and have that reviewed and approved by the city prior to implementation. Particularly related to asbestos, there are pre-notification and reporting requirements that have to be adhered to through the South Coast Air Quality Management District as well. There are some common examples of some of the best management practices or regulatory requirements that goes into that are having appropriately trained workers handling that material, doing baseline exposure assessments, post-activity exposure assessments to show whether any workers have been exposed, as well as a lot of handling requirements for removing that stuff, wetting it down, encapsulating it, completely removing those constituents of concern prior to just going forward with the entire demolition of the plan. In terms of operation of the power plant, there is going to be the use of ammonia for the selective catalytic reduction, essentially the emissions control system for these units to meet the best available control technology requirements that we previously talked about. Right now, there are two ammonia storage tanks at the Grayson site, each with a capacity of 12,000 gallons. One of those tanks will be removed, one of those tanks will stay. As part of the As part of the repowering project, we will also add a new 12,000 gallon capacity ammonia storage tank. So we will have two 12,000 gallon ammonia capacity storage tanks at the site. That is a hazardous material. I believe it's essentially an asphyxiant. And we did an off-site consequence analysis for that ammonia, looking at the absolute worst-case analysis of what if there was a release from one of those tanks. There are specific California and federal EPA requirements for looking at those worst-case releases. You have to look at absolute worst-case atmospheric conditions, assuming that the atmosphere is very stable and there's not a lot of mixing that would lead to dispersion. You have to assume the highest temperature on record for the last three years, essentially a higher temperature, higher evaporation rate, more ammonia that could cause an issue. And wind speed as well. The assumption is that there is very little wind that would lead to mixing and atmospheric dispersion. So the analysis is a very worst-case analysis. We looked at a very set of stringent thresholds of significance for this. What is referred to as a concentration that is immediately dangerous to life and health for ammonia is 300 parts per million concentration in the atmosphere. California Accidental Release Program and U.S. EPA typically use a concentration of 200 parts per million to determine whether or not there's a significant concern or risk. California Energy Commission uses a threshold of 75 parts per million. For this project, we elected to take a very conservative approach, and we adopted the California Energy Commission threshold for this project at 75 parts per million. And looked at all of those worst-case assumptions that federal and state government mandated us to look at, and we went forward and did the dispersion modeling using a collection of software that... We looked at... Okay? We're okay?
Yeah, sorry for the interruption.
We used models called Aloha and Slab to essentially model the evaporation rate of ammonia. Essentially, what happens is we assume this 12,000 gallon tank gets cracked open like an egg. Everything just dumps into the containment system that's built underneath it, and depending on all those conditions we talked about, that starts to evaporate and goes into the atmosphere and starts to spread out depending on those conditions. So using those modeling parameters that I talked about, we concluded that the 75 part per million threshold would extend beyond the power plant site boundaries and therefore would be considered a potentially significant hazards impact, requiring mitigation to reduce that. The mitigation measure that is included in the draft environmental impact report is reducing the surface area of the containment by 90% or greater. Very common approach is to use high-density polyethylene balls that sit in the bottom of the containment basin. Essentially, what happens if there's a release, the ammonia goes into the containment basin, goes through the balls, the balls being plastic, they float to the surface, therefore reducing the surface area of the containment that's available for evaporation. And based on that mitigation measure, the impact of 75 part per million concentration would be very localized to the release site and definitely stays on the Grayson Power Plant site boundaries and does not extend off. And as a result of that, the determination for hazards and hazardous materials was that there would be less than significant impacts with mitigation. Hydrology and water quality. Predominantly looked at introducing pollutants into the environment that could degrade water quality, substantially alter drainage, or create substantial runoff. This is another issue area or resource category that is subject to a lot of rules and regulations pursuant with the Clean Water Act and Porter Cologne Water Quality Control Act as well. The existing facility is subject to a national pollutant discharge elimination system for industrial stormwater discharges. That will continue to be the case. Glendale Water and Power is in the process of preparing an application to modify that permit coverage. During construction, there is also the potential to degrade water quality should there be a release of fuels, construction lubricants, of a spill during construction activities or sediments are introduced into stormwater during grading. And albeit, we do have some impacted sediments as well. So if there's petroleum hydrocarbons in that, stormwater gets into it, runs off the site, that could degrade water quality. All construction activities that are greater than one acre are subject to compliance with a national pollutant discharge elimination system permit for construction activities as well. Glendale Water and Power will be required to obtain coverage under that general permit and also prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan, both for project construction and operation, that includes a wide range of established and widely accepted best management practices to reduce the potential for introducing constituents of concern into water quality. Some examples of those, typically straw waddles, hay bales, filter barriers, silt fences, things like that. Do want to note that we did commission and perform a drainage study as part of this project that led into the design of the stormwater system for the project. As a result of the design of the stormwater system, we will be improving site drainage, improving infiltration of stormwater onsite that will reduce the amount leaving the site. And the treatment system that is proposed as part of the project will actually improve water quality infiltration compared to the existing conditions at the Grayson Power Plant. Because the project will no longer use potable water for generation purposes and will use recycled water only for generation, the project will result in less potable water use. And therefore, impacts to, potential impacts to water quality were determined to be less than significant. For noise, we looked at the potential to exceed city noise standards, again, construction and operation. The City of Glendale has a noise ordinance that specifies what those noise limits are, including for construction activities. And the noise ordinance allows construction activities Monday through Saturday between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. The project construction will take place primarily within those hours and likely would even be less than that. Typical construction is not planned for Saturday, only Monday through Friday, and will likely not go 12 hours a day. But generally, those construction activities would be consistent with the City of Glendale's noise ordinance for construction activities specifically. We did look at the potential for possibly having to do some large concrete pores of foundation at night due to temperature restrictions. We modeled what noise impacts that activity could have at the sensitive nearby receptors, which are largely residential receptors across the railroad tracks along San Fernando Road The noise levels from those activities would be below the city's noise standards. We also looked at the potential vibration issues associated with pile driving. We'll be taking out some piles that are existing there and driving new piles for the new foundation for some of the equipment and looked at the potential vibration impact that that could cause to those sensitive receptors. That vibration analysis concludes that vibration from pile-driving activities would be below established thresholds and would not create or cause property damage, nor would it substantially really interfere or annoy people. And there are actual specific thresholds for perceptions of that annoyance, and our modeling demonstrates that we would be below that. Spent a lot of time looking at the operational noise parameters. Again, it is an existing operational power plant. As you're starting to hear, some of those units are down periodically, and if they continue to go down and you run out of a Grayson Power Plant with the exception of Unit 9, you could expect the noise levels from Grayson to be reduced. So we looked at what noise levels the repowering project would create. What we did is we went out, identified the nearby sensitive receptors, again, largely residential. We collected ambient noise measurements at all of those sensitive receptors for no less than 15 minutes at each receptor. In most cases, we did one to two hours at those receptors. And in one case, we modeled ambient noise measurements at one for 25 hours, which is consistent with the California Energy Commission guidelines for assessing noise impacts of power plant-related projects. We looked at noise levels that were guaranteed by the major power generation equipment manufacturer, as well as all of the other ancillary equipment and what noise levels those could be expected to produce. We put those all into a model that is referred to as CADNA A, takes into account geometric spreading, ground absorption, screening effects, atmospheric absorption, noise source characteristics, including type, location, elevations. So pretty sophisticated model. And essentially looked at what noise levels the repowered project would create at those sensitive receptors. Those are based on both daytime and nighttime noise standards. As one can imagine, the nighttime noise standards are much more stringent, so we looked at that as our worst-case scenario and how much noise would this power plant create at night at those sensitive receptors. That modeling shows that those noise levels would not be met, so essentially the Grayson Repowering Project noise would be below the applicable city noise standards and would therefore be less than significant. We also looked at low-frequency noise that has the potential to essentially rattle people's windows, not necessarily... The city standards are all expressed in what we refer to A-weighted decibels. The modeling of low-frequency noise looks at C-weighted decibels. And we did conclude, based on that modeling, that potential vibration or low-frequency impact noise would be below those operational thresholds of significance and therefore would be less than significant. One mitigation measure for the construction is we do have some enclosures, buildings, and sound walls that we put around some of that equipment. And then to make sure we can meet those noise limits, we specified maximum noise level limits for specific pieces of equipment that we know will be met, that are well within industry standards, that will then show that we can project totally be underneath those thresholds of significance. Transportation and traffic. Looked at the project's potential to conflict with applicable measures of effectiveness for the performance of the circulation system. Again, we did look at construction and operation. We did do a construction traffic and circulation study. The scope and the methods of that study were approved by Glendale Public Works, the traffic section. It is a level-of-service-focused study. Some who are familiar with traffic impact analysis may have heard of vehicle miles traveled threshold that the state is now going towards for evaluating transportation impacts. Those thresholds of significance have yet to be adopted, therefore we did use the standardized level-of-service impacts. For City of Glendale, I believe that is a level-of-service C is the standard. Level-of-service A basically means it's very good free-flowing traffic. Level-of-service F means it's bad and there's congestion. So level-of-service C is somewhere in the middle of that. We had some coordination with Los Angeles Metro as well, particularly related to a proposed project to separate the road from the rail grade at San Fernando Road and Doran intersection as well, to make sure that our project was not going to conflict or overlap with that, that would lead to additional potential impacts. Believe we looked at 14-plus different intersections. We collected baseline traffic counts. We went through and looked at our trip generation rates, the distribution of those trips, which intersections they would go through, the times that they would go through, and then modeled what change in level of service our project would have at each and every one of those intersections. The conclusion of that analysis is that the proposed repowering project has the potential to degrade the level of service to an unacceptable level at one intersection. That intersection is San Fernando Road and Doran Street. And that is located adjacent to a proposed construction staging area, essentially underneath Highway 134 of Caltrans staging area, I think is what we're referring to it, and that is the way that you access that staging area. So that was going to require some mitigation. Our mitigation for traffic is a traffic management plan that the demolition contractor, as well as the construction contractor, will be required to prepare, particularly related to making sure that deliveries, particularly large deliveries or trucks that are entering and leaving the Grayson site itself, do not impact the circulation or safety of traffic on the adjacent areas. For mitigation at the one intersection where we had a potentially significant impact, San Fernando Road and Doran Street, we are limiting the contractors to no more than 24 vehicle trips during the peak hours, which are at 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. each day. They will be required to integrate their methods for verifying compliance with that in the traffic management plan that will also be reviewed and approved by the city prior to implementing the project. The operation phase of the repowering project has no substantial change in the employment levels beyond what exists today. Therefore, the operation phase traffic would be similar to that which occurs today and less than significant. Tribal-cultural resources is a relatively new requirement for the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Assembly Bill 52 that requires the City of Glendale to send out notification letters to Native American tribes that have requested such notification. City of Glendale followed through, sent those notification letters to tribes pursuant with Assembly Bill 52. There is a 30-day review period. That 30-day period, 30-day review period passed. No Native American tribes responded seeking consultation related to potential impacts for tribal-cultural resources for this project. City of Glendale has met the requirements, and we've concluded that there would be less than significant impact to tribal-cultural resources. And really a summary of the environmental impacts, the resource categories we evaluated, and just the impact determinations. Essentially, all were less than significant with the exception of aesthetics, hazards and hazardous materials, noise, and transportation and traffic that required mitigation. I will note to both the commission and the members of the public here tonight that we do have impact summary tables available in the back for review, as well as a summary of mitigation measures as well. We evaluated a range of alternatives in the EIR. There are requirements to do that pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The range of alternatives should be reasonable, meeting most or some of the project objectives, and also focused on eliminating or reducing potentially significant impacts from the proposed project. We are required to look at a no-project alternative. We looked at an energy storage project alternative, alternative energy project alternative, a 150-megawatt project alternative, and a 200-megawatt project alternative. I'll briefly describe you to one of those. And these are all evaluated in Section 5 of the draft environmental impact report in great detail. The no-project alternative is essentially running the Grayson Power Plant to failure with the exception of Unit 9, which is expected to occur in early 2020s. Essentially, generation units 1 through 8 would cease to be operational. The no-project alternative does not meet the project objectives. City of Glendale would not be able to meet the electrical demand that the city customers have, would not be able to meet the federal and state reliability requirements, or meeting its obligations, balancing authority obligations to the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and would result in the city needing additional transmission capacity or facing power outages. And that is even with infinite storage available. We just... We just need more energy, either generated locally or coming into the city. Also looked at the energy storage project alternative. What that essentially entails is replacing units 1 through 8 at the Grayson Power Plant with a battery energy storage system. The city would use Unit 9 and the allocation from the Magnolia Power Plant, as well as the 200 megawatts coming in from outside transmission to serve the city's electrical load and charge the batteries when excess capacity is available. Energy stored in the batteries would be discharged to serve the electrical load when demand exceeds available transmission and generation resources. It's really dependent on excess energy being available to do that. When there's insufficient excess capacity to charge the batteries during high loads is a problem. This alternative would result in reduced environmental impacts, but does not meet the energy supply or reliability requirements. Alternative energy project alternative. This entails some combination of photovoltaic solar or wind power production with energy storage and new transmission. There is not sufficient space within City of Glendale to have a utility-scale renewable energy project within the city limits. Looking at photovoltaic solar, that is typically about 1 megawatt for four to six acres of PV panels. In our analysis, we assumed five acres would be needed. So to meet the needs of the city in terms of additional capacity to meet the load, we're looking at having over 1,300 acres available to be able to do that. So clearly, that is not available within the city. The assumption for environmental impacts of this alternative is that there would be a utility-scale renewal project built outside of Glendale, likely PV solar, and that would likely come from the deserts in southeast California or even beyond, requiring a new transmission line to be built to deliver that power into the city system. There would be less potential environmental impacts from this alternative to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology, water quality, noise, and traffic and transportation. However, there would be more distant and substantial impacts related to the development of the off-site renewable energy project and new transmission lines, largely due to biological resources, agricultural resources, aesthetics, cultural and tribal resources, soils, and land use. Really just requires a lot more disturbance to land than the existing project, and really would not meet most of the project objectives. 150-megawatt project alternative. It's a reduced generating capacity alternative with essentially three simple cycle units at the Grayson Power Plant. There would be lesser air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, and noise impacts at the Grayson site related to a reduction in the amount of generation units at the site. Although this alternative would also require new transmission to be brought in, as well as some energy storage, to be able to meet that demand. And the impacts associated with that off-site transmission would have the potential to increase potential environmental impacts to aesthetics, agricultural, biological, cultural, and tribal resources, soils, and land use. And again, would not meet most of the project objectives. Also looked at a 200-megawatt project alternative. This would essentially include two simple cycle units and one simple cycle unit at the Grayson Power Plant. Unfortunately, well, incrementally, there would be less air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise impacts with the reduction of one generation unit. But it would not totally avoid or significantly lessen significant impacts of the projects. It would meet most of the project objectives, but not to the same extent as the project, and also represents a higher-cost option than the proposed option related to removing one of the combined cycle units and having a battery storage component as well. California Environmental Quality Act, in terms of alternatives analysis, does require the identification of an environmentally superior alternative. Based on that alternatives analysis, the EIR concludes that none of the alternatives evaluated would totally avoid or significantly lessen any potentially significant impacts of the repowering project. The proposed project would meet all the objectives while resulting in the fewest impacts when compared to the feasible alternatives evaluated. And therefore, the proposed repowering project is considered environmentally superior to the other alternatives. Anticipated schedule of the project. We are right now in the draft EIR public comment period, kind of right in the middle. When we are done with this, we will be preparing the final EIR, which will include responding to comments. Expect that to be done around Q4 of this year or Q1 of 2018, and are hopeful that we can have the final EIR available for consideration to the City Council for certification in February of 2018. If the EIR is certified, assume that site demolition will start shortly thereafter in June of 2018 and go through February of 2019. Construction starting in March 2019, occurring through June 2021, when the repowering project would be commissioned and operational. Summary of the public review. Currently, the draft EIR is available for public review until November 3. We have put a link to where that document is available, as well as written comments can be submitted directly to Eric Kraus, the interim Deputy Director of Community Development, in writing via email or fax at the contact information shown on the slide. And for additional information and updates, there is a project website, the GraysonRepowering.com, where you can find more information. And I want to thank everybody for allowing the time to present this. I know that was a lot of information, and I appreciate your patience. And with that, we would like to open it up for a question-and-answer session from the commissioners.
Mr. President, members of the commission, let me just sum this up so we can go back over what we kind of, where we started. So this process began with an integrated resource plan that we put together based on current law. That plan was presented to this commission and the city council, and approval was given to move forward with the recommended option, which is where we are today. We've had a number of different milestones in the project along the way, including limited notices to proceed on equipment, RFQs and RFPs for EPC contractor. And we continue to do what I will call the ancillary work associated with this on our permitting and other air quality issues. It is part of an integrated plan, and that's why I wanted to sum that up. It is one aspect of a total integrated plan that includes the aggressive pursuit of renewable energy, not only because that's what we want to do, but because the law says that's what we'll do as well. So as you saw from that short slide that I started out with, where we have continued to pursue those opportunities, they are also, when we pursue those opportunities, we're very conscious of those key factors: reliability, and rate impact, and environmental quality. And believe me, the rate impact is something that we are very conscious of. And so whether it's the right mix for meeting our goals and objectives and mandates, we also want to make sure that that mix is the least intrusive to our customers who have to pay that bill every month, and especially those of our significant customer base who is of fixed income, moderate income, low income, renters, folks who this bill is a big part of what they have to come up with each month. And we want to make sure that we're conscious of that in everything that we do. So with that, questions you have of the staff and the team on the presentation that you were given?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Zernan. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Appreciate that presentation. So as we go through here, I know folks have questions. To the degree that we can, if we can shuttle to pages if needed, right, I'd ask the staff to try to support that. So comments in the presentation, yeah. Go to Slide 3, for instance, if we need to do that. But for now, we'll hold it right here. So my fellow commissioners' comments?
I have a question. Can you please elaborate more about transmission line route limitations?
I'm sorry, about transportation line routes?
Transmission line right-of-way limitations.
Right-of-way limitations. Yeah, Carl, you want to take that one, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Transmission line limitations has become a very severe issue in the state of California, trying to find areas in which you can get right-of-way and build. It depends on what the voltage levels are, the lines, as to what the width of the line requirement is. I don't have all of those in the back of my mind right now. But we can reference a project in which Riverside has been trying to work with an inter-tie line with southern counties, basically San Diego, in which they've been in over 15 years of trying to get a right-of-way approved and still have not gotten to the place where they can find the property nor the right-of-way to build such a transmission line. It's becoming extremely difficult. I spent many years with LA Water and Power, and I think we got probably the last transmission line right-of-way through the Henderson Corridor. There is no more right-of-way in that area to get through. So bringing power in from east of the Las Vegas area is essentially impossible, okay? So transmission is a major, major concern. I'm not sure that that answers your question, but it's nearly impossible to acquire the right-of-way, whether it be through the federal government or through private properties.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that. Where do the projections come from for capacity reductions on that 100-megawatt line? In my review of the DEIR, it appears that basically we have to back that line up 100%. We have to have 100 megawatts of available power here in Glendale. So can you talk about some of the events that would lead to that power
Let me just put out that today, for an example, the DC line is out of service, and Glendale is without that 100 megawatts of power coming down the DC line. And that occurs from time to time. Steve, if I'm not mistaken, a year or two ago, that line was out for three months, if I'm not mistaken. So that occurs. They can occur from anything, from transformers to thyristium valves that have gone bad on the DC converters, other issues. I think Mike did a real good job earlier saying, we have that one line. It's a DC line. It has tremendous more capacity than just 100 megawatts, but Glendale only has rights to 100 megawatts on that line, okay? The other lines coming in from the east, from the Victorville area, there are multiple lines. And again, on that whole system, Glendale has 100 megawatts worth of capacity, okay? Now, what we were talking about earlier, Glendale, by regulatory requirements, FERC and NERC, as well as its balancing authority agreements, must have backup. And that's called both non-spin reserve as well as spinning reserve to cover the single largest contingency. Their single largest contingency is the loss of that DC line, which is 100 megawatts.
Just a follow-up question on that one. Since our single largest contingency, that 100-megawatt, is driving pretty much how much we need energy or how much we should be building energy for reliability purposes. How long is that contract for? Because isn't there a way of getting that energy for in a smaller increments like the other one so that we don't end up losing 100 or nothing? We could lose something less. How long is that contract for?
Contract is for...
Through the 2067, I want to say, off the top of my head.
I said 2070, but... And you wouldn't want to break it up because you could effectively lose on that significantly. So once you have it, the last thing you want to do is break it up or cede it in any way, shape, or form. And there is no alternative location to make it up. So I see what you're saying is if you spread it out over maybe three or four different areas. But the problem is, we don't have the other areas to spread it out to.
And there's no redundancies built into that 100-megawatt transmission system from the generators or the transmission individuals?
As Carl indicated, if there is a problem, if something occurs unexpectedly, we will get an email. That's it, an email that says, you now have this much transmission capabilities as of 2:00 a.m. or 1:00 a.m. Today, the line is out because of maintenance. And even though we have, we've asked, because we, as Carl said, are just one user of that line, we've asked to even push the maintenance period back a little bit because, as you may see, October has become a warmer month than maybe it was in the past. We haven't had any luck in convincing those folks. Their maintenance cycle is there, so...
Order, please. Want to make sure that I can hear Mr. Zern.
There is a problem with the speakers in the back, and I can't regulate that from here. So we've had a little bit of an issue for the back of the room, so I apologize for that.
We'll try to project, okay. So somewhat of a follow-up question on that, which to my mind is a different question. So I recognize that we have some requirements as being part of the balancing authority.
Correct.
Is there an option in which the city could move over to the California Independent System Operator and then work away from the types of requirements that are part of the balancing authority?
It is conceivable, yes. And it's something we looked at in the IRP. And as you go through there, it was the cost alone to get in and then to maintain membership is through the roof. Plus, they have as many issues in the KISO with jam points and traffic that we do. We've always felt we are in a much better situation, being in Los Angeles as balancing authority, both us and Burbank, than being in the California Independent System Operator. And that's proving, each and every time we do that analysis, to be true. From a number of standpoints, even all the way down to outages, if you look at the outages on the KISO versus the LA system, you can see it's year in and year out quite a bit of difference. And I'm talking about outages on the main transmission system.
Okay. Very good. Other questions? Commissioner Hale?
Yeah, so I want to dwell or dig in a little bit on the legal requirements. So you mentioned NERC, FERC, our peering agreements with LEDWP. So this question of 100 megawatts is, for me, 100 megawatts over what? So what is that spooling ready reserve capacity and what's driving that? Is it NERC? Is it FERC? Is it LA, the agreement with LA? So my question is kind of twofold. From a systems planning perspective, what do your staff feel comfortable with having under their control at the flip of a switch? And from a legal requirements perspective, what's required of Glendale Water and Power to deliver?
Well, the numbers that we're putting here, and I'll let Mike or the staff elaborate on that. The numbers we're putting up here are a combination of the three agencies, NERC, FERC, and LA as our balancing authority. So that's where we came up with the number. This wasn't a number that our folks were comfortable with or what they'd like to have. This is what we would be required to have from the different regulatory agencies. And it's pretty complicated about, as Carl mentioned, the spinning and non-spinning. The fact of the matter is, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have reserves for your reserves that you deplete within an hour. So you've got to have, you know, on top of reserves, you have to have reserves on top of those if you put those reserves into use.
But most of these things are required of balancing authorities and not the individual utilities within balancing authorities. I mean, there are overlapping requirements, some of which trickle down to Glendale. But that's kind of what I'm asking is, how much of these are pursuant to the agreement with LEDWP and how much of these are actually driven by the regulations themselves?
Commissioner Hale, if I may. So the city does have a balancing authority agreement, a balancing authority area agreement with LEDWP that drives much of these requirements. And those come down from FERC and NERC. However, we are subject to sanctions from FERC and NERC if we fail to meet reliability, if we have significant outages. So it's a combination of the two, I would say, that is driving this.
So follow-up question on that. Sanctions, we could get sanctioned if we don't have the reliability... the reliability requirements. While the construction of this project goes on from 2021 till 2025, we will not have any generation here. And from the total sum of available power that I see, whether it's coming from outside, whether from Grayson, whether we buy it from L.A. of 75 megawatt, I believe, we still will not have 430 to maintain that single-load failure. So what are we doing at that point? And are we going to get sanctioned?
We're not going to get sanctioned, and we're meeting that through outside resources, including the purchase of power from LADWP.
Yeah, but that's only 75 watts, 75 megawatts, and we're getting about 230 from outside, so that's 300, plus the generation at nine, that's about 340. We need 450 to cover the single-load failure.
During the transition period, there's a process in which we notify, and there is some leeway that's given. And if we have to buy more from L.A., we'll have to buy more from L.A. That's the bottom line.
But we're not going to be imposed to any sanctions?
No.
So seems there's some sort of a flexibility with this?
There's a flexibility when you're in the middle of construction. There won't be flexibility once the plant is done. If it becomes, you know, there's that temporary period of construction. If for any reason, we were either to not have the plant, or once the plant was repowered, those requirements would be in place. Any other follow-up to that?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't part of negotiating those contracts with L.A., but basically, L.A. does not enter into long-term agreements. So Glendale was able to, and working with Glendale, secure two short-term, 18-month-type agreements with L.A. to provide the backup as necessary to get us through. And that also is their assurance of backing us up through this contingency without being sanctioned at that point of the game. It's just part of the overall agreement that we've been able to work out with L.A.
One more question on that reliability issue, again. Currently, Grayson generates 267 megawatts, and looking at Slide 11, you indicate you need 282 just to meet the requirements. So at this point, it sounds like we are short about 15, 16, 17 megawatts. Is that a problem?
Yes, you want to elaborate, you wouldn't be paying L.A. every year to cover you for that?
Right, so we're paying millions to L.A. to cover the deficit. So we buy it from that through the balancing authority, correctly, pay their rates, that's well, that's well into 70. Oh, I'm sorry. That was my fault. So we pay a significant amount of money to L.A., millions, for the power that's needed to make up that deficit.
The 2015 IRP evaluated some of the options for repower in Grayson. In that IRP, the 200-megawatt project was described as performing well across all metrics. The 250-megawatt option was described as having the highest capital investment costs and emissions. And also, in the IRP, they pointed out that it might rely on off-system sales in order to keep costs down. So is that the case? Are we basically building a power plant where we're going to be selling a portion of the power to pay for it?
No. The question was asked of me by city council, could you sell power from the plant? Well, conceivably, you could, just like we buy power from other utilities, you could do that. It was looked at in the IRP, and that was a conclusion they made. But at that point, at this point in time, we have not pursued that in any way, shape, or form, nor did we base this recommendation on sale of power to outside agencies. And, you know, we had had some initial interest from folks who knew that we were undertaking the project, but we haven't entertained any of those discussions. And quite frankly, the way that the permitting requirements are now, it's unlikely that we could become any kind of a net seller of power. It would be probably generally along the lines, SCAPA, you're familiar with the organization we belong to, Southern California Public Power Authority, to the extent we could help one of our fellow utilities when they were in a pinch, just like we've been helped when we were in a pinch. That might be the extent of it, but we don't have any intentions of being a merchant plant. And believe me, the permitting agencies would not tolerate that either.
So if I can ask a follow-up to Commissioner Law's question, which is, if we're not then looking to sell excess power, if you analyze the utilization factor, that is, the level to which you'll be utilizing the plant on a rolling basis?
Mm-hmm.
And what do those numbers look like?
Maybe one of the folks can, based on what is our utilization?
Now, I'd ask you to step to the microphone, please.
They're going to get to the microphone. Hang on.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, public. My name's Dave Taddio, and I'm a consulting engineer, part of the team. So if you recall back, Mike talked about the annual, or in Steve's opening remarks, the annual energy usage by DWP was like 1.1 million megawatt-hours. And about 57% of that came from eligible renewables and large hydro with the balance being made up from other sources. When we developed the profiles, when you permit a power plant, there's two things we had to do. One, because of the variable, how the load varies over the course of the year, we had to have units sized that were small enough that you weren't running large units at part-load during parts of the year where you didn't have enough transmission capacity to cover all your load, but you weren't at your maximum load either. So that was part of what drove the unit sizing. The second part of it is, is when you permit, you have to permit for, you look at your worst cases. So in effect, we permitted for more hours than we would run if you look at how much non-renewable energy of that 1.1 million. So, for example, there's two combined-cycle units, two simple-cycle units. One of those combined-cycle units, in effect, will be running all the time, okay, between full and part-load, helping to balance renewable imports, dealing with the intermittency that comes in from the transmission system. The others, the second combined-cycle unit, is there to run primarily during, I'll say, the May to September, October period, when the system loads are high. And then, the simple-cycle units are there to meet the high peaks, and also to serve, you need to maintain a, like Unit 9 does currently. Unit 9 currently is the only 10-minute start-capable unit at Grayson, so it serves the reliability need of having 10-minute non-spinning reserve. Unit 9 probably continues in that function, although the other two new simple-cycle units could also serve that function. So none of the units run at full capacity for the full year. The simple-cycle units are permitted for multiple starts during a day, up to three starts during a day, because typically what happens, you know, if you look at the solar production during the day, what typically happens these days is, a simple-cycle unit starts in the morning, as the load's coming up, but the solar hasn't come up yet, and then they come off. And the same thing happens at the end of the day, when the solar is dropping off and the load's coming up. And so the units are permitted for that number of starts and hours. And like I say, the combined-cycle units are permitted to run continuously. We didn't permit them for the full 8,760 hours. We permitted them for well over 8,000 hours each, recognizing that there's an annual outage on each of the combined-cycle units. I don't have all the numbers at my fingertips, but if, you know, there's a profile that we developed that we could give you.
If I read it correctly, it was 7,596 hours per year.
Okay.
For the combined-cycle.
Like I say, it's a while since I did that, and...
So that means running approximately 20 hours per day.
Well, combined-cycle unit, I don't think you would start and stop it each day.
Understood. I'm just saying, so that we can understand what 7,596 hours is like, it would be like running 20 hours per day.
Okay.
Understanding that we're not shutting it down at that 21st hour.
Right. Yeah, combines, the simple-cycle units, they're meant, they're just like an airplane engine, you know, starts and stops. And the combined-cycle units, because of the steam plant, we would tend to bring those up, stay on all week, and then whether it stays on for the weekend or not, depends on what the expected loads are like.
So I hear you saying that at least some of the units would only be intended to run approximately half of the year, right, if you're going May to October? So let me just ask a slightly different question. I appreciate you don't have all the numbers at your fingertips, and you did some of this work some time ago.
Yeah.
Do you have sort of a blended understanding, that is, of, you know, overall, that you'll be utilizing this, what you would construct, 262 megawatts? Do you have a round number on what that utilization would be, blending all the units?
The simple-cycle, 1,700 hours per year.
Yeah, we permitted them for that number of hours per year. The simple-cycle units, because they are simple-cycle, they're less efficient, you cannot permit them for continuous operation, all right? So those units were based on primarily peaking service during the summer months. And then during the winter months, we put in some starts and some hours just to cover contingencies. The combined-cycle units, like I say, one of them is on continuously, so that gets you to at least 50%. And then the second unit is on during the summer months, so, you know, it's that combined capacity, it's probably like 75%, something like that.
Okay. Okay, I mean, so to my mind, I just think, you know, part of my concern is that we're sort of rightsizing the solution. And to the extent Commissioner Law asked about, you know, potential for reselling power, apparently we're not headed down that path. So the flip side of that is sort of underutilization. And as we build, you know, among the various projects that we've contemplated, this is the largest of the projects that we've contemplated. And so to the degree to which we underutilize that asset, you know, that's kind of where the spirit of my question comes from.
Yeah, I understand. The challenge we have is that, is the range in loads that the system goes through, okay? If you look in the EIR, there was a couple of charts in there, and you can see the system load varies quite a bit. And there's the one chart that Mike had in the presentation today. So, you know, if we had a steady load, then we could size, you know, you could size the units and plan on them running full-out, and it would look simpler. But in reality, we have to cover that peak load, we have to meet the reserve requirements, and that's what drives the maximum capability of the project. And then the amount of energy you expect to use, that's what drives you to not be running at full-load. We don't expect those units to run at full-load continuously, because you don't need that much energy because of the imports that you have.
Right.
But at the same time, when you get to that, you know, three, four-day stretch of hot weather, you need to have all that capacity. And I think we discussed it in the EIR. When you look at the last three years, it's like 80 days a year. You're above that 187 megawatts after you've considered the single largest, the loss of the single largest contingency. There's 80 days a year, a quarter of the year, where you need to have that generation to serve your load. You might not eat all of it, but you need, clearly on the peak days you do, but you're above 187 megawatts those 80 days.
Okay. One more question that's sort of in the same category, related to utilization, and that is, at a time where certainly as a state, we're having, we're looking at 33% renewable portfolio standard and continuing to march up from there, right?
Yes.
So one of the areas that, to my mind, would be a risk is if, because of state mandate, we were to be limited in the amount of time that we could actually burn natural gas. And that, once again, gets to my concern about whether or not we would have an asset that we couldn't fully utilize based on regulation. So thoughts on that?
According, right now, the law would not restrict us from...
Let me, I'm sorry, pardon me, Mr. Zern. So let me just ask folks, we want to make sure we get to public comment, so if we can minimize the disruptions, I would appreciate that.
So there's nothing that would prevent us from operating the plant currently, if I understand your question of, would there be restrictions?
I think you were talking about future legislative action that could be taken that would limit the use of natural gas. Is that what you were saying?
So I suppose that's a speculative question.
Speculative question, absolutely speculative question.
But there has been a great deal of leadership in the state generally regarding the reduction in reliance on traditional fossil fuels.
Right.
That is only going to continue. It is, I think, it is only going to continue, okay? So I think, if I understand the question, there is a concern about what risk does this expose the city to if our relationship to fossil fuels is profoundly changing in the future?
I don't think it poses a risk. We will continue to meet whatever the mandate is. That mandates are coming in years 2040, 2045, or some of the numbers that have been thrown out. But we need to get there first. So this is a way for us to bridge, as part of an overall integrated plan, to get there. I don't know that we're risking anything, because we get to the point where we no longer can use, let's assume it is this 60-40 split of renewable versus carbon-free, and we get to that number, and everybody says it's, yep, here we are, 2045 or 2040, or whatever that date is, or 2050, who knows what that date may be. Then we don't. I mean, by then, we will have ramped up our renewable portfolio, we will have pursued carbon-free, not necessarily RPS, and we will be ready to meet the mandate. But it's, what we're doing now is getting us to that point, and we need to get there, because we can't afford the gap that we're going to have in between. And this is the way we meet that. So, you know, from a perspective of compliance, we will be compliant. That's what we, you know, I will state that now, and that's what we will be, compliant with whatever the law is.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, just to follow up, you know, there is some issues with contracts in place, if you're referring to the issue of potential stranded assets. There's a chance that may occur, yes. Whether it's a long-term contract we have with fossil fuel, or non-renewable, or it's our plant, in some way, shape, or form, that's why they're stretching the time out as far as they can to try to avoid that as much as possible. But there's a lot of agencies that will face some level of stranded assets, and we likely will.
Well, it's a follow-up question to the questions and the concerns, and basically, I'm going to try to distill it to a number. You have a utilization rate of these combined-cycle and single-cycles that are going to run over the thing. So what's going to be the average retirement age for this combined-cycle, the new combined-cycle we're putting, or the new single-cycle?
Units have a design life of 30 years. You know, how long they last, you've gotten 70 years of usage out of Units 1 and 2, right? It gets down to how well you take care of them. How much, so, but they have a design life of 30 years.
That's exactly the concern that is being questioned here, is we've got these equipment, that they have a design life of 30 years, and regulation may come in to prohibit us from running it the full 30 years, and this is based on their design. Isn't there any way we could do this in phases to minimize the risk at the same time, but build it up if necessary?
That actually is a great point. We should have done that 20 years ago. And if you notice other utilities who have done that, where they have incrementally increased or replaced their units, Pasadena recently did it, LADWP did it recently in the last five years, Anaheim did it in the last five years. Unfortunately, we didn't do that. We, you know, we staked it, we put a peaking unit in in 2003. Other than that, the next unit, or the most recent unit from then was in the '70s. But it's a good point from putting it in an incremental basis. But now, we just don't have, we don't have the existing equipment in a condition that we can rely on going forward. And so here we are. I would love to have done this, you know, replace one unit here, five years later, replace another unit. replace another unit, maybe 10 years later, we put another unit in. That actually would have been practical, but that's not what we did, and I can't change what, what occurred in the past. So here we are with equipment that is extremely old, and, and getting in, in less and less workable condition each year.
I'm sorry, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like state regulation is going to come down, maybe speculative, whatever, but we've got, for example, unit three, four, and five seem to be steam boiler turbine engine. One's been running for 64 years, the other's been for 53 years, and the average, average retirement age of these are 54. Is there any way we can salvage these, eliminate one and two, put something in their place, and do the phase we're discussing here?
Three on your list is, is already retired. That, that broke down, and we did not fix it. Four and five are, I've made the last repairs to those that I, that I will make, in all good conscience, and for our ratepayers, I will not make any more repairs to those two units. They're operating, we baby them, and they are operational now. Those are also the two units that, that burn landfill gas. Five, a little bit better condition. Four, I, I'm not sure how much longer we have on those, and again, I wouldn't make any more investment in those. The investment we made in the last three years has been significant. So again, your, 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 your point is a good one. You know, if you, if you can roll back time, we would go through some level of incremental replacement. That, that makes the most sense, but we didn't do that.
I understand globally that natural gas is used throughout California to balance incoming renewables.
Firm and shape.
Renewables are intermittent. Wind and solar go on and offline, depending on the wind, depending on sunlight. In the EIR, they talk about this project being essential to incorporating renewables onto Glendale's power system, and again, we go back to reliability. And specifically, they talk about SB 350 and getting to 50% renewables by 2030. Again, the horizon is going to change. We're going to go beyond, I think that we are going to go beyond that 50% mark. And what I'm trying to understand is how does a project of this size integrate renewables effectively? Because I think if I have a reservation, it's that I don't understand the size of the project. I'm still struggling to understand, in a city of our side, size, even with the constraints that have been laid out, incoming transmission, the need for this incredible amount of backup power, not the ability to not be able to build any more transmission. I mean, for obvious reasons, we are not going to be building gigantic power lines to come into our city. I'm still struggling to understand the size.
So, two things key on integration of the renewables. One is, we have very limited transmission, as you said. By, by being able to, to have our base load, meet our reserve requirements, meet our spinning and non-spinning reserve here with Grayson, no transmission required, that frees up the limited transmission we have to import renewables. That was our objective. That's one way to integrate. The other way is the firming and shaping of the intermittent that you spoke of. We now pay people to do that. We pay other power plants to do it, and we pay a hefty fee to do that. Grayson, a repowered Grayson, would allow us to firm and shape that energy and do it at a much more cost-effective rate.
Right.
Plus, meet all of our reserve contingency and emergency requirements.
All right. And then, again, in the EIR, the case was made that battery storage could assist in this firming and shaping, but that it was inadequate to the task of doing that, partially for financial reasons, and also because, as laid out in the document, the storage projects that have been completed so far don't match in scale what's proposed here for natural gas. Again, my concern is, these technologies are changing very, very rapidly. Battery power is coming online very, very rapidly. I don't know, having read through this document still, how deep it really went in evaluating those resources. So, I guess, if someone wants, from the project team wants to address this question...
But utility, I would say, battery storage is becoming more and more, it's being, it's experimental. I mean, that's the best you get out of Southern California Edison.
It is, and it isn't, I mean, you can, you can go into downtown Glendale and buy a battery to put on your wall. I understand this is residential usage.
Right. I'm talking about utility scale.
I understand that.
Battery storage, which is what we're talking, and some people say, oh, I can put one in my house, I can do this.
Right.
Those I can't use as a comparison. You know, you have to look at utility scale, and, and so, and we are, as you're, as you're well aware.
I know, there's, there is a...
We have a project in place, and we have another project we're looking at.
Right.
So, as, as, you know, to help with load. And batteries aren't a generation, they're, they're a storage process, but I'll let Dave talk about where we would talk.
To, to help answer your question, I want the second one, Mike, okay?
Duck, Kurt.
Yeah, there we go. So this, this is, was in the alternatives analysis on the battery energy storage alternative, and this is the challenge that we had, because we did look at doing an all-battery option. So what this is, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so what this shows is a 24, it says 24 hours across the bottom, and this is the month of August. Each of those curves is how the load varied from hour one through hour 24, on the Monday through Fridays, for all of August. And then the two horizontal lines, one's at 287 megawatts, and the other one's at 187. So let's look at the 287-megawatt one, okay? In that case, where you have, sorry, get me back. The problem is have, the challenge is having the energy available in the off-hours to charge the batteries, okay? So when you've got everything available, all your transmission capacity, and Magnolia and Unit 9, everything's working perfectly, then if you look at the area under the flat line, and where the load curves are, you've got enough energy to cover the peak hours. But if you take away the single-largest contingency, then what happens is there's insufficient energy underneath the available energy to charge the batteries to cover the peak. And what happens is, you could have a very, very, very large energy storage system, but you simply can't import enough energy to charge the batteries to get you through the day. In the wintertime months, you can do it, but during the summer months, you will, you will simply get to a point where the batteries are exhausted, and you'll have to turn off customers, because what you're able to import through the transmission system is insufficient to cover the load. That's, that is the problem that we had with going with an all-battery solution, was it meant that there were going to be ti, there's times of the day, there's months of the year, where you're simply going to run out of energy. That was, that was the big problem that we had. The cost problem is solvable, okay? And yes, I, I agree with you, you know, battery, there, there's a lot of progress being made on batteries. The scale of battery storage that you were looking at, that would be needed for this project, it's probably not the lithium-ion technologies that people are doing today for, you know, what, what are relatively small battery projects. I mean, we're talking about scale up here of like a factor, well, you saw, you read the EIR, you know, a typical project today is like 40-megawatt-hours, right? We were up 20 times that or more in terms of what we're doing. It's probably not lithium-ion technology, it's probably flow batteries. But, so, so the money and the technology part, that can be solved, okay? The problem is, is the inability to get enough energy in to charge the batteries, to give you the energy to serve the load all day long, that was the challenge.
And a, and a combined-cycle gas plant next to a battery project doesn't solve that problem, so marrying the two things together, I mean, it seems like you're talking in an either-or, but what if there...
So that's what the 200, sorry, but that's what the 200-megawatt option was that we, we looked at, okay? So what we did in the 200-megawatt option is we turned one of the combined-cycle units into a battery, because we gave up the combined-cycle unit and put in a big battery. So that one works technically, but what we said is it ends up costing more, because what you're doing then is you're using the transmission imports, plus you're running the units to charge the batteries.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't it make more sense to combine it with the peaker? So to take one of the peakers out, and have two combined-cycle, and have one of those combined-cycle charging the batteries, and take out one of the peakers? Because it seems like we're, we're investing an awful lot in peakers to address days of excessive heat, and I get it, the, the climate's changing, so we are going to have more excessive heat, and we have to factor that in too. We can't forget that we're probably just going to keep getting hotter and hotter.
So...
But, so, would it make more sense then to combine the combined-cycle with the batteries, and the batteries are there to ramp up on those days of excessive heat? That's what I'm asking.
We could have done that. The reason we chose to eliminate the combined-cycle unit is compared to a simple-cycle unit, it's a lot more money. And so if we had kept both combined-cycle units and eliminated one of the simple-cycle units, then the cost of the 200-megawatt option would have been even greater than what we presented.
Okay.
Thank you.
Plus, Dave...
Commissioner Hale, did you have a comment?
I just want to comment one quick thing on that, unless I'm wrong. Also, the elimination of a unit put us back into an issue with spinning and non-spinning reserve, where we possibly would have had to continue to go to LA for, for assistance.
Yeah, I mean, there, in, in today's world, particularly with intermittency, there, there is a, a lot to be said for having a unit that can start quickly, hence, hence why we did the peakers. The combined-cycle units, it's, it's a four-hour startup for them, and...
They're also expensive, right, to start up?
Well, in getting that combined-cycle unit going, one of the things you have to have in place first is water chemistry, all right? Because you're going to make steam, and when you boil water, you leave stuff, the solids stay behind, you have to have water chemistry in place. So a startup on a combined-cycle needs to be a little bit more planned, whereas on, on the simple-cycle units, I, I can just go over and literally, I push a button, and 10 minutes later, or less, I'm at full load. That, that in a world of intermittency is a great capability to have.
Okay, good discussion. Commissioner Hale?
Yeah, so what analysis have you done on the alternative energy scenarios? It seems, from your comments, that you only considered utility-scale solar as a part of that, as one of those, those alternatives, and there's just not enough site control here in Glendale for that, right? So what about rooftop? I mean, is that, have you considered a rooftop alternative? Is there, is there an option for rooftop? And I get all the policy issues with that, there's site control issues, and there's, there's a lot of policymaking to be done before you get there, but what does that alternative look like for, for Glendale, or what might that alternative look like?
When we looked at the alternative energy project alternative, what was really driving the proposed alternative was the amount of capacity that needed to be generated. And looking with inside the city, that space was just not available, and the city does not have control over that. And I believe, and correct me if I'm going to be misstating, but I believe that there is also a caveat that the city may not get renewable credit for those sources as well?
We're not getting it now.
Yeah. So that, that plays into it as well, is if that even were an option with space, we could not use those energy resources to meet the renewable energy portfolio standards.
So, but that alternative only considered the sites that are under Glendale's control, or was that for the, within the entire geographic borders of Glendale, there's not enough space to generate enough solar to be able to meet our, to peak need?
I did not, and I'm not sure if anyone else on the team did, and please let me know, that we looked at the total number of rooftop space in the city of Glendale, and compared that to what we need. I do not think that is...
Feasible sites, not, not, you know...
Yeah. We looked, we looked at sites that Glendale would have control over.
Right.
In those sites, there is just not available space.
Okay.
An example would be, I think, Glendale Community College, where there is a small PV solar project, and was that 0.3 megawatts, I think, where there is some control. So yes, there, there are no suitable sites under city control that could be developed for that scale of a project.
We, we did, we did, and we continue to look at, at various sites for much, much smaller projects where we can get those, maybe even a community-based solar-type situation, parking structures, the tops of reservoirs, those kind of areas that we have control over, but nothing that we could match on a megawatt-to-megawatt...
Yeah, and, and I mean, so there's, there's the theoretical kind of potential generating capacity of all the rooftops in the city that, you know, if you, if you manage to get site control first, in some ways, through some policy mechanism. And I get that in the short run, you really can't achieve that, because that requires years of, of kind of political process to, to get there. But I, I guess in the, how much capacity did you find? So in the, in the renewable energy alternative scenario, what, how much, how much capacity were you able to kind of come up with at, at the maximum?
I'm not aware of us looking at rooftop space...
No, not, not including the rooftop. I just mean, among the sites that have, where we, where Glendale has site control.
I, I do not believe that we looked at how much renewable power could be generated on sites within city that the city has control over.
So, changing tracks completely, and this is really a question for GWP staff, is this proposed to be a SCAPA project, or is this going to be wholly financed by GWP itself?
It is not a SCAPA project. We investigated that early on, and, and we were not able to do that, because as a SCAPA project, SCAPA would hold the bonds, and that means that the project would be then owned by SCAPA.
Yeah.
That would be a new owner, that's not a repower, that's a new plant.
I see.
So that wasn't feasible. We had that run to, to ground pretty well, and so it meant that we would have to go on our own.
Okay. So what, I mean, are we proposing to not spool up either of the peaker units for most of the year, when we don't need to meet that demand? I mean, is it, are they, are they just going to lie dormant for...
They're, they're obviously going to be used primarily in the, in the hotter parts of the year. You saw the hours that we indicated they would run, so, you know, and that's what we permitted them for. So yeah, they don't run, they don't, they're not built to run continuously, as Dave, as Dave said, and they really are for, for the hottest peak, to ensure that we, we meet our reliability load requirements during that period of time. Just a follow-up too, and, and on that, look at solar, not associated with the, the EIR, but we, we continue, as I said, look at, look at sites, and even look at those, at certain sites in conjunction with developers for the projects, and developers haven't found anything that, that they, it really takes probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 acres, a minimum, if not 1,500, for a project to be developed that would be substantial enough to, for us to, to have it here.
That's correct. A utility-scale solar project would probably need, at minimum, 1,000 acres.
I'd say two square miles. There is a 250-megawatt project that, that LA owns, and it's probably about two and a half square miles.
Right. I think the question is, is there an innovative, forward-thinking way of working with homeowners, business owners, building owners in this city to get solar in the city? I'm not talking about, can't do natural gas 100%, but as an alternative to going with a fully gas plant, is there a scenario under which we could drastically increase the amount of either rooftop or ground-mounted solar in conjunction with one of the scenarios that you've laid out in this DEIR? Because I think, I think you can see, I'm still not, I'm not, I'm not totally with you, I'm trying to, I'm trying to come to grips with this. It's a really big plant. I get the transmission, but it's a really big plant.
All right, so I actually stood up to address another point earlier... All right, so I actually stood up to address another point earlier, okay? And something that Mike was not aware of. But like, the conversation you were having about rooftop solar, we did look at rooftop solar a little bit. And we looked at what the city's done. And there's been like 1,200, sorry, 1,300 rooftop solar installations in the city to date. And that's added, that's 12 megawatts. And we, if you recall the system description, the schematic that we put up there, one of the little boxes we had was rooftop solar. And so we did think about that. But like I say, it's, you can, you can do the math, you know? Each rooftop is a pretty small increment of generation.
Okay, so we've been... Okay, so we've been going for a little over two hours. Good conversation. Appreciate the opportunity to ask questions. But we should probably try to get to public comment here sometime, sometime soon here. But Commissioner Kadikian, did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Yes.
I was just going to say, we also have reserved at the end, more comment period for you.
Okay.
Just final question, just reviewing the alternative EIRs that were evaluated in the EIR. You've got total battery, total solar. Has there been some sort of a matrix created that would say, this is the best combination of meeting the reliability, meeting environmental issues? Because really, I mean, I wouldn't even consider it an alternative, all battery or all solar. It's just not going to happen. So have you, have you come, I mean, these numbers seem to have been given, a project of 150, 200. Have you sat down and said, the best combination would be 50 solar, 50 battery, 150 natural gas, or something, whatever it is? Has that study been done?
Some of the alternatives that were evaluated in the draft EIR are not just one or the other, that do include a combination of thermal generation and battery storage and possibly transmission. So we did look at it from the alternatives that we evaluated in EIR, as well as comparing the alternatives' consistency with the project objectives and what environmental impacts it has. As part of that alternative evaluation, there were a number of alternatives that were originally considered but excluded from further analysis as well. And that's explained in the EIR of what those were.
And I'll just add, the Integrated Resource Plan also was that exercise in looking at how we would meet our future demand through an integrated approach, which is, we didn't, we didn't get down to how much solar, how much wind. We just categorized it as renewable, looking at the transmission we had, looking at the local generation, looking at the regulatory requirements, looking at rate impacts, all of those type of things. So that's what the Integrated Resource Plan did look at, is not an all-or-nothing scenario, but a mix.
I mean, I reviewed the Integrated Resource Plan, and the history of the need of how much megawatt we're going to need is 350 now, and it's 300 in 2030. But at the same time, with all the generation coming in and whatever we're going to be purchasing in the future, by 2030, our capacity is going to be 550 megawatt. So we have, even including the 100 single-load failure, by 2030, we're going to have excess of about 150 megawatts. And I'm not sure, what are we doing then?
I have a comment here.
Well, can we, you're asking us a question, right?
Yes.
So if we can try to answer that before we move on, but I'm not sure where you got the 500 megawatts?
There was a chart in the EIR I saw that by 2030, there's going to be generation, including the new, including everything else, was going to be about 550 megawatts.
I don't recall specifically.
Okay. Because I mean, there's, I asked because there's, there's assets that are coming offline while new assets are coming online. For instance, coal, we still have coal in our portfolio. So coal will be coming offline, and we'll be replacing that. So you have a megawatt-for-megawatt replacement. But I couldn't speak to the 500 megawatts, I'm not sure, that's why I asked. But, you know, at the end of the day, when we get to, to the end of whatever that mandatory required date is, you know, it's likely we may have some excess, and that's where we'll try to balance as we get down, down to that, that compliance date, ultimate compliance date. There's compliance periods in between that we will have to meet. Sir?
Yeah, I myself, my profession, I'm electrical engineer, and I'm lead engineer as well. So considering that we don't have to put all our eggs in one basket, there is a solution, I think there is a solution with the combination of these alternatives. So considering that we have limitation of transmission line, at this time, we have 200-megawatt capacity with the transmission lines. So I'll say that we don't want to risk and import all 200-megawatts solar. At least we can import 100-megawatts solar power. So we have that capacity and keep another 100 as with the, you know, transmission line that we have. So then, we can have a combined-cycle, you know, and a simple-cycle, you know, combination to start fast. And then we can have a balance of peak time load and reserve that we are talking, that we should have, battery system. So with this combination, I think we can, if we worked a little bit on that, we can come up with a solution. I'm, my opinion is, we can't go all with solar because we have, we have transmission limitation. We can't go all combined-cycle because we have environmental effect. We can't, we can't deny that. So, but we can't have all. We have to have a combination of this. So I think balancing this out, we can find a solution.
Use a microphone, please.
I believe that's exactly what we have. We are talking about building a plant that allows us to bring in 200 megawatts when it's available of renewable energy into the city, okay? And we will look at along the line, and I think we know that battery storage with inside as that technology continues to progress. But the fact is, you still have to meet that unique situation. So when you asked about the capacity factors, we expect the capacity factors of these units to be low. They are your insurance policy to make sure that you're supplying electricity to all of your customers when it's needed. Whatever the situation is, with a loss of a transmission line, what about an earthquake when you separate from Los Angeles and you're by yourself? All of those circumstances come into play as to what are you doing to be able to serve your customer as a load-bearing utility? That's a fundamental issue that is all wrapped around. But that idea of a combined unit, yes, that's exactly what we want to bring in on the transmission line, is renewables. 200 megawatts of it if we can. Unfortunately, you know, solar only comes in, what, eight, 10 hours a day? But it's still the concept that that's exactly the kind of integration that we're trying to bring in, and why we set up front. The plant is designed around the ability to integrate the renewables to the fullest extent that we possibly can.
And we have that today.
I don't know how else to try to say that, except that we've taken all of that into consideration and taken a look at it.
And Carl, we have that today. You saw that when I, in my little slide there at the beginning, where you saw that, how the power is categorized, and that we have renewables, that we have carbon-free, that we have others which includes fossil fuels, and as we begin to balance those with our transmission. So we're already, we don't have all of our eggs in one basket now, nor do we intend to do that in the future. I'm sorry, did you...
Yeah, I was just going to ask, the matrix that you suggested, that's not explicitly in the alternatives. But I guess I'd like to talk to alternatives a little bit, because implicitly, I think it's there. You know, the, when we talk about doing Grayson to free up the transmission for renewables, you know, right now, part of that transmission capacity is used to import fossil generation. You know, San Juan and IPP are two examples, okay? You know, so that fossil generation goes away, and eventually what happens, the thought is, all that transmission is only carrying imports. It is carrying renewables. And then Grayson is there to address the intermittency of what comes in over the transmission line. When you look at the 150 and the 200-megawatt options, that, those kind of get to your matrix concept. The issue with the 100, fundamental difference between the combined-cycle and the simple-cycle units are, simple-cycle units, we can't permit them for as many hours. We're limited starts, hours on the simple-cycle. It's like, one of the issues with the 150-megawatt option that we didn't go into is, you know, all right, that'd be 350-megawatt turbines, okay? They had, we had to go and put transmission component into that because the 150 megawatts of simple-cycle can't generate enough energy because they're hour-limited, okay, to charge batteries, for example. So you, that's a combination where you have some simple-cycle turbines, you need to rely on transmission, more transmission. And then you could do batteries as part of that. We looked at the 200-megawatt option, that had batteries as well, with, still relying on the transmission, 200-megawatts of renewables coming in with the transmission, batteries, and the combined-cycle and the simple-cycle. And we, there, we sent, that one would have been viable, we simply went for a, it became a cost issue. And so I think, we can put together a matrix like you like, but I think a lot of the, a lot of what you need there to put the matrix together is there. Does that make sense at all?
It does. I understand what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with it. The matrix I was hoping for would be solar with incentives to force or encourage homeowners to put solars. So if we had a matrix that says, you can spend X dollar putting generation and spend X dollar giving rebate, encouraging people to put solar on their rooftops, then that kind of a combination will meet our needs. That's what I was hoping to see. Not exclusively just the things, but a combination of everything, battery, solar, natural gas.
Okay. Yes, so at this stage, I do think, why don't we move to public comment? And as we, so thank you very much, appreciate your support. Okay, so as we move into public comment, just a couple of things. One is, we do have a good number of folks who would like the opportunity to speak. We look forward to hearing from you and having your, having your thoughts and your voice added to the public record for this draft EIR. I would like, generally speaking, we'll go in the order in which you signed up for public comment for item 2A. But I'd like to ask your indulgence that we allow young folks. We do have, I'm not sure, we still do have young folks? Do we still have young folks? Yeah, that maybe went to bed already, which is, which is probably okay. Do we have any young folks left who wish to speak? Okay. So then, so then I think probably what we can do then, we'll go on the, we'll go on the order in which folks signed up for public comment. We will, we do have at least one person who would like to gift time to another, we'll permit that. We will, I will be limiting the public comment to three minutes per person. So, you know, we can do as many as five, but in order to make sure we give as many people the opportunity to speak, we'll do three minutes per person. So I appreciate your support on that. We did receive a PowerPoint presentation, but we will need to consider that, just sort of your written public comment. So that PowerPoint presentation was not received within the particular 72-hour window that we allow for, for display on screen. So with that, we'll go to our first, our first person here, which is Daniel Brotman. And Daniel Brotman, you have the time gifted to you from Mike Van Gorder, and so you will have a total of six minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we, well, my name is Dan Brotman. Good evening, everyone. I live in Glendale in the Verdugo Woodlands, and I'm the co-founder of a group called the Glendale Environmental Coalition. Before we start, I want to make sure that the record reflects the numbers of people that have come out this evening. Viewers may not be able to see it, but we at least did have well over 50 people that came, not all from the Glendale Environmental Coalition. But they've all come out because they're very disturbed with the proposal that's on the table today. Many of them have left because it's now over two hours, so, but there was serious community concern here. I want to make several points because I find that there are just so many consistencies. In fact, I don't really know where to begin, but I'll try my best. First of all, this is called a repowering. It's really an expansion. This will increase the capacity, the generation capacity of Grayson by 33%. The EIR says the capacity will increase by 43 megawatts. That's quite misleading. It's actually 77 megawatts. The reason for that is that the EIR uses nameplate for the older units. The older units don't produce anywhere close to nameplate. So if I go back to the IRP, Exhibit 7, which talks about the plant and contract details, that makes it clear what the current units actually can generate. And on that basis, we're increasing the size by 33%. This is significantly more power than Glendale needs. Today, we have a peak demand of 350 megawatts. Against that, we have, if you include what we're importing, if you include what Grayson is producing, we have about 400, just slightly over 400 megawatts available to us. I've taken out the San Juan coal. So that gives us about a 15% buffer, okay? Once Grayson is, once this repowering or expansion is completed, we'll have a buffer of about 40%. And over time, that will increase, as has been stated here. Demand is expected to fall, according to the IRP, to 300 megawatts by 2035. The IRP also indicates a rooftop solar penetration in their base case of 40 megawatts. So if you add all that together, by 2035, we have over-provisioned by 80% of Glendale's requirements. One interesting thing in the, in the IRP, it says, I'll quote, "Given current supply and peak load expectations, GWP currently maintains a sufficient capacity margin to support reliability and reserve requirements." If a 15% buffer is sufficient capacity margin, I would like to ask, what has changed? Why is this no longer the case? In terms of the rationale for the expansion, I don't think it's been adequately supported. First of all, the claim that FERC and NERC requires this excess capacity to meet the single-large-tick contingency requirement, if that is true, have we received any letter from them that we are not in compliance today? And on what basis is that claim made? So that's one question. The other is reliability. During the three-year construction period, we're taking out 185 megawatts of capacity, and we're contracting with LA for 75 megawatts. How is it possible that 75 megawatts will power us for a three-year period? Not how is it possible, but why would we need so much if 75 megawatts can power us for a three-year period? Has an independent group like Enrel, for example, studied the extent to which renewables, storage, and demand management can address reliability? The California Energy Commission just concluded that it can, in the case of the Puente Plant in Oxnard. LADWP is asking Enrel to study this in LA. Why are we not looking at this in Glendale? And if reliability is an issue, why would we build in a designated earthquake liquefaction zone? Why would we have a single point of failure that could be taken out of commission in a large earthquake? There are just a lot of inconsistencies here. The expansion will increase net emissions of greenhouse gases that are responsible for warming our planet. It will increase criteria pollutants and toxic air emissions, particularly those that are associated with asthma, cancers, heart disease, kidney disease, and other illnesses. GWP talks about buying offsets, but can you assure parents of children that are at Franklin or Mark Heppel, or employees at DreamWorks or Disney, or residents in the Pelicania Estates that their local air quality will not worsen? And then there are a whole range of financial risks. Who will we sell this power to? And by the way, in the IRP, it says, we should, a recommendation, find a long-term municipal partner to contract for a share of the plant's new capacity and energy in order to reduce market exposure associated with potential... market exposure associated with potential excess energy sales. I've run out of time, but I think that's enough, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman, appreciate you expressing your, expressing your point of view. So next, we have, let me ask, in order to get through folks, let me just ask that we don't, no applause. So, next we have Bert, I think, apologize if I butcher anybody's name, Bert Cologne, followed by Angela Johnson.
Mizaros.
Mizaros. Mr. Cologne, so you have three minutes.
Hi, yeah, my name's Bert Culver, I live up in Montrose. My questions are, how does SB 338, which just passed, which requires utilities to develop carbon-free alternatives to gas for peak loads? Is anyone talking about that, that just passed, so that should affect this project? Renewable portfolio standard, 40 percent renewables by 2024, that's what, three years after this plant comes online, and, so it's going to be basically mothballed, we're, we're building a plant that we don't need, that's just going to sit there. That seems like a waste of money. Looking at the IRP, the environmental impact review, report, so they use the population, they said, to analyze the cancer risk, use the population, the default by the EPA is 7,000 people per kilometer, and that's if you don't know the population in the area. Glendale's population is $6,000, is 6,000 people per square kilometer. They used the LA County population, which is 2,000 people per kilometer squared. So actually, there's three times more people in the area around Grayson, and if you look at the numbers that they generated for the cancer impact, that three times throws it over the, the threshold. So I'm not sure why they used the lower amount, but it worked out for their numbers. So the cost of replacement on a third-year plant, that's 16 million per year for this new plant. So how much does it cost to keep the old one running? It can't be 16 million per year. They just spent $4 million three years ago to, to put new tubes in two of the older plants to, so it'd keep running. So if we could get another 10 years out of it, that would be great, and batteries would be cheaper, solar would be cheaper, et cetera. Google Project Sunroof shows that on Glendale's roofs, we have the capacity of 450 megawatts. Granted, that's just during the day, but that would be a lot of power for charging up batteries, and if we do, if we do, say, 50 percent rebates on solar, then we get customers to pay for part of our power, and we get the federal tax credits. That's 30 percent of the project that we could get right there. It seems silly not to use that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, Angela, and then follow, following Angela will be Kathy Jurka, I believe.
Angela, what is your last name? Johnson Mizaros. Yes, Johnson Jurka. Yes. K R O S. Yes. Not common, but he's a good man. Good evening. I had, I brought copies of a few pages that I wanted to direct your attention to, and I don't know if I can share those with you, but if it's possible for me to just pass those around, and as it turns, oh, I'm sorry. And as it turns out, I didn't bring enough copies, so, y'all have to share. But you're very close to each other, I'm sorry about that. I just want to make a couple of, of quick comments. So, I think that the question that's really before this commission and before the city is the question about, how is Glendale going to ensure that it's got reliable power, that's cost-effective, and meets the needs of the city? And that's a really important question, and essentially, what GWP came back to you with is, a half a billion-dollar solution that's got a lot of problems. They've provided you with the most risky, least cost-effective option for meeting your needs. The fact of the matter is, they're proposing a baseload power system to meet peak need demands, and as some of your conversation indicated, there's some concerns about the size of this project. That concern comes out of your recognition that there is probably more that can be done to meet the needs, and why do we need all natural gas in order to meet those needs? So the, so I want to direct you to a couple of things in these pages that I gave you, because I think they're really important. One of the questions is about what's going to be your RPS future. They talked about how they've incorporated the RPS requirements in the analysis that they did. The first page in your packet is Page 47 from the IRP, and what it shows is, they've considered 33 percent RPS, and not a 50 percent RPS, which came into effect with 350, and as we all know, we expect to see SB 100 back, and we expect to be on the course to increasing RPS requirements. The backside of that page, Page 48 of the IRP, gets to this question that was being raised about how much energy you're going to have produced. And what I'd like you to do is just take a look at that, that chart on Page 48, and also the next page, which is Page 8 of your IRP. And what that shows is, in, in particular, because I think this one is clearest, so this is Page 8 of the IRP, it's got a hash line that goes across, which they identify as being the need, and then you can see there's all this above the need. There's a lot of energy produced above the need. The path that you're on, where you have a baseload system that meets all of your energy needs, means you're paying for your baseload system, and then you're paying again for renewable energy that comes from wherever, whether if it's locally or if it's being imported, you've got energy twice, you've got way more than you need. And that's why in the IRP, has been pointed out several times, there was conversation about whether you can sell some of that energy, because we all know, it's a lot of energy. And, and because my time is up, I want to just, you guys had two and a half hour, great. I want to point out something that's very important. The DEIR that's been submitted to you by your consultants is not going to be legally adequate in three areas. It's not going to meet the requirements for alternatives, it's not going to meet the requirements for your air pollution analysis, and it's not going to meet the requirements for the greenhouse gases. So I understand that we are at short time now because
Thank you.
... of what's going on. I will be submitting very detailed convers, very detailed comments about this, and urge you to think very carefully before you commit the city to
Thank you.
... two generations of mistake.
Thank you, Ms. Mizaros. Okay, next, let's go to Kathy Jurka.
I forgive you for butchering my name.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. Good evening.
And then Roberta Medford next, go ahead.
Yes, it's Kathy Jurka, J U R C A. I'm a Glendale resident, and I am critical of the draft EIR and opposed to the proposed project without further study of alternatives. I'm here as an environmentalist and as someone who's concerned about the enormous price tag for the project and the slim chance that Glendale will ever come close to recouping its cost. No one here tonight is saying do nothing, we're only asking you please to help us do the right thing. I'm dismayed by the EIR's rejection of alternatives that not only would be cleaner but more secure insofar as they are distributed rather than concentrated, sorry, insofar as they distribute rather than concentrate the city's energy production. The EIR rejects a battery storage system alternative and a solar alternative, but it takes neither of these very seriously. They need to be considered in conjunction, not independently. First, the solar plant does not need to be a large facility, it can be rooftop and parking lots with the right incentives. Unused solar energy can be sent back to the grid to charge the batteries, and the battery storage facility also compensates for the inherent limitations of solar by supplying energy when the sun isn't shining. The failure to take these alternatives seriously is one example of why the EIR is flawed. And I wasn't going to bring this up tonight, but I was really gobsmacked by the discussion of the earthquake risk. We heard about a couple of local faults, as though seismic impact is measured by distance from the fault. We learned that Grayson survived the Silmar earthquake, that's good, it was a 6.6 and lasted 12 seconds. My former colleague at Caltech, Lucy Jones, whose name I'm sure is familiar to you, stated publicly in June that she thought the, the overdue San Andreas earthquake would probably be the maximum, which is 8.2. That is 251 times stronger than the Silmar earthquake, so I'm not very reassured to know that we survived the latter. The earthquake liquefaction zone is a very good reason why we need to distribute Glendale's energy production as widely as possible, not concentrated in one area. I think we're building for a market that is not going to exist, according to regulations that are going to be changed. It's a waste of money and bad for the environment, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Roberta Medford, it will be followed by Scott Lowe.
Hello, I'm Roberta Medford, I've lived in Glendale in Montrose since 1996. I came here tonight because I am convinced that this proposed major expansion to the Grayson Power Plant to be fueled only exclusively by fossil fuel is not the right choice environmentally or economically for Glendale or for the planet, and I, I know that if this go through, go through, we will look back and realize that we have put ourselves on the wrong side of history completely. I consider myself so fortunate to be here in the company of all these so well-informed, so committed, young people, younger people than me, much more cognizant of the specifics of the proposal and the environmental facts and data. I hope that all of you consider yourself lucky to get the benefit of this wisdom as well. I urge you to listen to them and to pay attention to them. I urge you to advise Glendale Water and Power to not continue throwing good money after bad, as the expression goes, and persisting in, in a project of this level and of this sort. And I, I really ask you to use your leadership role to direct Glendale in a smarter direction to take us into the future as far as energy and not back into the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your comment, Ms. Medford. Next, Scott Lowe, and Scott will be followed by Karen Kwak.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Scott Lowe, I'm a Glendale homeowner. I've worked in Glendale for around 15 years and lived here for 10. I looked through the EIR, and I was looking for one, the answer to one question, which is whether the plant would increase or decrease emissions in Glendale. I found the answer, and that's it will increase emissions in Glendale in one of the most densely populated parts of Glendale during the day. You've got DreamWorks right there, you've got around 15,000 people at the Disney complex alone, so it makes absolutely no sense to increase emissions in that part of Glendale. I know it was said that in the draft EIR that it would, there wouldn't be significant air pollution impacts due to required offsets, but that doesn't have anything to do with the air that the people in that area are breathing. If I lit up a cigar and blew it in Steve Zern's face, I think he would probably be offended, but if I said I paid someone out on the sidewalk to not light up a cigar, I think, I don't think he would care very much. So that's exactly the same thing as offsets, it doesn't make any sense to me why someone in Glendale cares about offsets somewhere else that don't affect the air that they breathe. So anyways, that was my main point. I think it's especially misguided, given that the prices for renewable solutions are falling every year. Personally, I have solar panels in my home. Despite my deep love of air conditioning, our solar panels have reduced our power bill to nearly nothing, and will pay for themselves after about seven years. Is it smart to make a $500 million investment in obsolete technology as the price of clean alternatives plummets, especially while possible state mandates like SB 100 mean the plant may need to be retired before it's paid for? A gas-powered plant was forward-thinking in 1941, but it's a huge step backwards in 2017. Building a plant of this scale at this price is the equivalent of spending top dollar on VHS tapes just as DVD players were getting cheap. Or investing in horse and buggy manufacturing as cars were widely adopted. Do the right thing and stop this now. It's in your power both to protect our health and prepare Glendale's electrical system for a cleaner future. And listening to the, the early response by Mr. Zern about, this basically isn't a very smart plan, and Glenn, he's playing with his phone right now, but, thank you for the respect, but, listening to the
You need to speak to the commissioner.
Okay, it's okay, I'm speaking to you too. Listening to the early response about how this is basically not a very smart plan, and how Glendale should have actually prepared for this in the past. There's a proverb that's something like, the smartest time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, but the second smartest time is today, and that's how I feel about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe, moving on. Karen, would you please pronounce your name for, for us, followed by Michael Reed.
Hi, I'm Karen Kwak. I timed
Karen, tell me your last name.
Kwak, K W A K. I timed this comment earlier, and it's going to be short, like me. So, I'm Karen, I moved to Glendale earlier this year, and interestingly enough, my last town of Salem, Massachusetts, was in the middle of building a new gas plant when I lived there. I could see this gas plant from my kitchen windows. The gas, this gas plant replaced an oil-fired plant, and it was considered an improvement over what they had had before. Maybe this type of marginal improvement works for Massachusetts, but here in California, we can do better because we have this fantastic abundant natural resource in our sunlight, which we see almost daily. My question is, why aren't we doing our very best to make use of this natural resource as a first priority before turning to dirty and polluting fossil fuels, which should be our last priority? On hot days like today, when temperatures hit 98 degrees, I dream of powering my air conditioner with solar energy. This would be a smart thing for Glendale to do. We can harness the power of the sun on hot sunny days like today and store solar energy in batteries for use at night or on less sunny days during the winter. And this is not simply a dream, this is actually happening today. As Fortune Magazine reported as of today, and Fortune Magazine is hardly a bastion of progressive values, Tesla Energy is delivering power packs to Puerto Rico as a flagship project to help Puerto Rico re-power and rebuild its energy grid after its devastating hurricane. If Elon Musk's solar panels and battery storage are good enough for Puerto Rico, why aren't they good enough for Glendale? The Glendale City Council passed a resolution in July, signing on to the mayor's National Climate Action Agenda to support the Paris Climate Accord. Asking a neutral third party to research installing more solar power and other renewables in Glendale before expanding a gas plant would honor that accord, and as a bonus, it would also irritate Donald Trump. Thank you.
Ms. Kwak, okay, next, Michael Reed, followed by Mary Lee Behar. Do we still have Michael Reed? Mary Lee Behar, followed by James St. Aubin. Do we have Mary Lee Behar? Do not? James St. Aubin, followed by Mike Allen.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners, for your service, I really appreciate that. My name is James St. Aubin. I'm a resident in Verdugo Woodlands, my daughter is in Franklin, I'll have two more daughters in Franklin soon. First, I think I just really want to support everything that's been said here by the public so far, I think it's all in line with the general comments I'm about to make. The basic premise is that I think we have not fully vetted the renewable options that we have, as far as, you know, I'm learning a lot about power generation, I knew almost zero a few days ago, and I came to be aware of this situation, I'm a fairly new resident to Glendale, but I, you know, I just, it's very, I, I feel very strongly that this is the wrong course of action, we're sort of driving by looking through the rearview mirror right now. It's, it's 95 degrees outside, it's October. I, you know, I don't think we understand how bad things are getting, you know, if we're thinking about building a fossil fuel-fired power plant, there's a hurricane headed to Ireland, you know, how, I mean, these things are happening, how many, how, how bad does it have to get before we wake up? I know there are many technical challenges with building renewable energy, especially in LA. In, in Europe, in Germany, there is, you can't build a fossil fuel-fired plant, right? It doesn't, you can't do it, pretty much. So, they have figured this out, we haven't figured this out, we can figure this out, you know, and I, and I'm an investment guy, and I just want to also mention with my remaining time that, you know, there's, there's a lot of, there's a big theme in investing right now called ESG, environmental social governance, it looks at how, how companies, you know, use resources and, and rely on renewable energy. And I think Glendale has a real opportunity here to stand out as a leader in developing more natural, more renewable resources, and by doing so, we can attract companies that follow that theme. This is a big theme, it's not going away in investing, it's going to be here to stay. More people are attracted to that area of investing, and it's growing every day, and I think if we are forward-thinking people, if we are people who care about the future and care about the success of our city, we will give more due consideration to renewable options and figure out ways, we do not need to do this, and we can do it in ways that make more sense for the city, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, next, Mike Allen, followed by Elizabeth. Okay, next, Mike Allen, followed by Elizabeth Vatanza. Do we have Mike Allen? Elizabeth Vatanza, followed by John Ballen.
So, my husband and my six-year-old had to leave, but I wanted to thank you all for your thoughtful questions, and I just wanted to make a couple of points. One, LEDWP recently put on hold all future gas-fired plants, including ones that had already been approved, so I'm wondering if it's good enough for LEDWP to hit pause on these kinds of projects? Why isn't it good enough for LEDWP? Or GWP? Sorry, it's late, it's been a long day. The second thing I would like to know is that it's not reassuring to me that if a 7.0 earthquake strikes that my power will be online, because I'm assuming that at that point, large swaths of this city will have, you know, destroyed homes. Like, me being able to connect to the internet or like watch TV is not going to be the thing that I'm worried about when the 7.0 earthquake hits. And I don't appreciate having a centralized power plant source of power for that. So again, I wanted to echo what Kathy Yurka stated earlier. But my main point is really that my six-year-old son and 600-plus other children at Franklin Elementary that are, who go to school less than a mile from where Grayson currently sits, will have to breathe in, year after year, not to mention the over-two years of construction and the dust, the toxic dust, as it may be, the ammonia risk I think is very alarming. And you can say, "Oh, well, it's, you know, 30, by 2035, we'll have to figure something else out." Well, that's my entire child's childhood and adolescence, where he's going to be breathing in that air. And that's not acceptable to me, that we haven't figured out at least some other alternative models, or have an independent commission to come up with some proposal, an alternative proposal. I don't know, would you want to send your children a half a mile away from a plant like this? Because it's not acceptable to me. And I know I speak for most of the parents at Franklin when I say that. And it's not just Franklin, it's also Mark Keppel as well. So these are kids who are probably going to be given asthma, who knows what their cancer risk is going to be, and if they already have these, if they already have asthma, it's only going to get worse. So I don't know how you feel about that, but that's unacceptable to me. The other thing is that just today, the former mayor of Glendale, Laura Friedman, her bill, AB 1414, the Solar Energy Systems Permit Bill, was signed into law by Governor Brown, which makes it easier and cheaper to install solar on our homes, on our businesses, et cetera. So, the state is moving forward, whether or not Glendale decides to move with it or against it is up to you. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, John Ballen, followed by Jan Sangren.
John left, I didn't get it.
Do we have Jan? Or if I mispronounced your name? Followed by Daryl Gale.
Hello, my name is Jan Sangren, and I'm a resident of Glendale, I'm also a business owner in Glendale. I own a business in landscape architecture and planning, and I'm heavily invested in the region, working on the Griffith Park Master Plan, having generated the Elysian Park Master Plan, having generated the first document for landscape plant palettes and guidelines on the Los Angeles River, and the Grayson Plant is right there. And so I look at things from a regional viewpoint, and I would respectfully request the City of Glendale and the Commission provide an outside source for looking at alternative energies instead of the Grayson Expansion Plant. I'm very strongly opposed to the project, as numerous hazards are being downplayed by the current EIR, at a time when the post-industrial nations must move away from fossil fuels. We need a clean energy development. Due to increased environmental pollution in Glendale, I'm opposed to the project, and the financial risk, which the Commission also stated, when state energy policy is continuing to evolve at a rapid rate, I would really propose that we put a halt to this and look at other alternatives. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Next, Daryl Gale, followed by Paul Beralzheimer.
Good evening, Glendale residents and Commissioners. As a downtown Los Angeles resident, I have strong ties to Glendale. Every Monday, I go to my Glendale chiropractor via MetroLink and the Glendale Beeline. Afterwards, I often stop at the Glendale Trader Joe's, as well as various stores or other fast-food places on brand. Because I am a very green person, very low-carbon person, and I try to live my life that way, including living in an apartment building with 115 solar panels on its roof, which is a rarity, I understand. Saturday, I went to a health study meeting regarding the Aliso Canyon SoCal gas leak. Many of the adjacent Porter Ranch residents have all kinds of documented toxins and carcinogens in their blood, urine, and hair samples. We don't need more methane in LA County. Methane gas is not clean and it is not natural. SoCal gas last year added 100,000 tons of extra methane to our regional atmosphere with their well-publicized gas leak. Physicians for Social Responsibility, called, it's also known as PSR.org, has a free 36-page report on their website, which has well-documented studies and information on why there are very serious health risks from methane, as well as it being a powerful, positive feedback greenhouse gas. The hotter it gets, the more we run our air conditioning, the more methane released into the atmosphere, the more we trap the heat, and the hotter it gets. So it's called a positive feedback loop. I beseech the City of Glendale to strongly consider some alternatives. We have never, ever, in Southern California, been in compliance of federal air condition, air quality. I also want you to think outside the box. I regularly go to the LEDWP, and we keep pressuring them to ramp up battery storage. They will eventually listen to us, it's just a matter of time. So if you want to use our battery storage instead of getting your own, you can do it that way too, it might be cheaper, I don't know. How about, you know, the gentleman to my right made a case about that solar wouldn't work for Glendale. Well, Lancaster and San Francisco, they have used solar on all their new buildings. And another thing you could think about is maybe, like the other lady said, rooftop, the new rooftop solar from the tiles from Elon Musk. If you think you can't, you know, afford it, why don't you ask him for, you know, to be a beta tester for it? Maybe he'll give you some rooftop solar panels for free, you don't have to use all the land, so you could just use it that way. So anyway, I just hope you think outside the box and do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Paul Beralzheimer? Sorry. And then JG, maybe I'll get that one right.
It's okay, you got the pronunciation exactly right the second time. I'm Paul Beralzheimer, I'm, I've been a resident of Glendale for 30 years, and have been a homeowner here for 25, and a father for 22. I had some specific concerns about things in the draft EIR, but I actually want to ignore that for now, and just say that we learn every day that we're, that we're in more danger from climate change than we had previously known. Every time a new report comes out, we realize that we have to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions more than we even thought, sooner than we thought. And Glendale, I think, has an opportunity now to draft, to really be a leader and drastically reduce its greenhouse gas emissions by subsidizing rooftop solar as a large part of its energy generation capacity. I think that a healthy subsidy program using the money that would otherwise go into Grayson would get a lot of Glendale homeowners, certainly myself, I've been saving up for solar, I just haven't installed it yet because I'm still saving. If there was a subsidy in place, I would have had solar in my house a year ago. And I have enough rooftop space to easily generate enough power to cover all of our needs, including charging our electric car. So obviously, that reduces overall need on centralized power, the more you have distributed We need to stop our dependence on gas, obviously largely because of its, the greenhouse effect of it, but also, as we now know from the big leak that happened last year, and from the reports that have come out from fracking, the extraction of gas is dangerous, the storing of it is dangerous, we really just need to get off of it altogether. Of course, once solar is installed, the ongoing energy cost is near zero, and the shading effect of rooftop solar reduces a lot of air conditioning demand, so it just makes more sense than building more gas-powered capacity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. As we move along, JG, and then Kent Minault. Would suggest too, if you, if your comment has been covered, feel free to abbreviate. Do we have JG? Kent Minault, followed by Martin Schlageter.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners, I'm Kent Minault. I worked with the Sierra Club's, excuse me, campaign to get the, previously mentioned, to get the Scattergood Plant essentially put on hold for a while, and also all of the gas plants as well. I want to make a comment about the EIR, because I think in presentation, it appeared very detailed, but it has a gaping hole in it. It discussed the climate-changing emissions from combustion, but it made no mention of the climate-changing emission from the leaky pipes, valves, and meters that would deliver the natural gas to the project. And this is an enormous oversight, I refer you to a California Energy Commission report, Methane Leakage, that came out in June of 2016. It basically points out that the amount of methane leaked from the wells and pipes and valves in our state's delivery system exceeds the amount of the Aliso Canyon blowout. Essentially, we have an Aliso Canyon-scale climate disaster in this state every year. It's not possible to operate a gas-powered generating facility like the one proposed here in an environmentally sustainable manner in this state. Now, I was very encouraged when I heard the questions from you Commissioners about the combination of generating resources that could be used instead of the proposed plan. I think that thinking is exactly right, and I encourage you to continue along that same path, especially, could you please include two things that were not mentioned in the report? One of them is energy efficiency. An energy efficiency program in this city with a robust, robust public outreach could do away with a lot of the demand that this is required, that this project is being asked to supply. And also, would you please consider demand response? Again, nowhere in this report was demand response mentioned, and these two things could go a long way to helping combine with storage and renewables to create a suitable alternative. In 2016, LEDWP used demand response very successfully, because they were told by the gas company that power outages would result from taking Aliso Canyon offline. Now, no power outages resulted from taking it offline, and they used a program called Summer Shift, where they asked large commercial customers to shift demand from one time of the day to another. Now, consider taking those four things: demand response, energy efficiency, renewables, and storage. What would be the optimum way of putting those together? Would you commission a study to that effect? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Okay, Martin Schlageter, followed by Mark Morris.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Zern. Thank you for inviting me here today to participate in your public discussion about Grayson Power Plant EIR. My name is Martin Schlageter, that's S-C-H-L-A-G-E-T-E-R. And I'm the Policy Director for Councilman Jose Huizar, that's H-U-I-Z-A-R, in the City of Los Angeles. His district represents Eagle Rock, which is Glendale's neighbor, and which is adjacent to the Shoal Canyon landfill that is cooperated and used by Glendale. And on that, I'm sorry, this is related to the EIR of Grayson Power Plant.
Oh, it is.
It is indeed, and in fact, that's the core of my complaint. It is admitted in both documents, there is an MND on the Street for a landfill gas-power plant at Shoal Canyon, and in the draft EIR for Grayson Power Plant, that the landfill gas that's combusted in the current Grayson Power Plant is going to be shifted to Shoal Canyon. But the impacts of that are not considered in the EIR. As a result, you have an incomplete EIR for Grayson Power Plant. Consequently, you also have an inadequate public outreach process for both Grayson and the landfill gas plant, most importantly, the landfill gas plant, which is adjacent to Eagle Rock. And to date, Glendale has refused to provide a public meeting or public discussion of the gas plant at Shoal Canyon in our community.
So, sir, if I can just interject briefly, if you would, pardon me.
Yes, please.
So, if you could limit your comments to this particular project, if you'd like to address the Shoal Canyon project, we can have you do that during the oral communication on item number three.
I think my point, and I appreciate that, and I won't go into any detail about the landfill gas-power plant, except to say that when the Grayson Power Plant project is presumed and assumes, is presumed to, that the landfill gas generation at Grayson currently goes somewhere else, that somewhere else needs to be analyzed. That somewhere else is, in both documents, referenced to be the Shoal Canyon landfill gas power plant of 12 megawatts. It's important that those impacts are included in this analysis, and I just want to say that I really appreciate the conversation that the Commissioners have had on trying to right-size and create a mix that's appropriate for Grayson Power Plant. It's, it was a righteous conversation and one that deserves to be followed through on. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Schlageter, okay. Now, next, hold on here a moment, so I have Mark Morris, but speaking on Agenda, item number three.
Yeah, that was, it was a confusion.
Okay, so you're to speak to 2A then?
Yeah, to me, yes. I have been a member of the Communication Workers of America since 1977, and I have worked on the communications infrastructure for the City of Glendale, and seen very many technological miracles happening. And even though I'm not here in the capacity to speak for the Communication Workers of America, I am here to report to you that we are having very many gatherings with United Steel Workers, with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and labor, American labor is moving in the direction of renewable energy. And I felt it necessary to report this to you, because I would hate to see so much money and effort put into a project that even American labor is beginning to come around and say, "Maybe it's time for transition." So I just wanted to be able to share that with you, report that to you, and thank you so much for providing this time to the residents of Glendale and to those of us who care and live here in the Los Angeles County area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Okay. So next, now Andrew Ellis, it states here oral communication, so is that really for item three?
No, two.
Two, okay. Mr. Ellis, followed by Anna Belcher.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Andrew Ellis. I've been a resident of Glendale for 27 years. I speak in opposition to the Grayson Power Plant expansion, and I'd like to briefly just touch on a few comments. Nobody has really talked about the extraction of natural gas in California using a technique called fracking. Where is Glendale going to get the natural gas that you're going to burn in these combined generators? So that's the first question. Is it going to be fracked out of fields north of Los Angeles, west of Baker's Field? And are my tack, are my dollars that I'm paying to Glendale Water and Power being used to support fracking? And are my dollars that I'm paying to Glendale Water and Power being used to support fracking in California? Or is the gas that you're going to burn in these combustion units, is it fracked gas? And are you using my money to support fracking in California? I don't support fracking at all, and the fracking is really just an extraction technique where you inject high-pressure steam into rock formations to extract natural gas that seeps out. The other questions that I have concerning the storage of natural gas, we've had a problem up in Porter Ranch with the storage of natural gas, where the gas storage operators stored the gas in the storage field with the blowout preventers that were removed in 1970s, and nobody told anybody. That led to the largest climate disaster ever on the planet, right here in Porter Ranch. So, is Glendale going to be storing this natural gas here? Is it going to be transmitted into Grayson, where Grayson is on top of a liquefaction zone in high-pressure, large-diameter pipes? And what is the safety of the high-pressure diameter pipes in a liquefaction zone on an earthquake fault zone? Where is the—so, are you going to use fracked gas? Are you going to store this gas? Are you going to bring in the gas with high-pressure natural gas lines into our communities? You told us that you were going to store 12,000 gallons of ammonia at this plant. This is unacceptable. This is a community where we have children. Nobody has talked about the children. When you increase the temperatures by increasing the carbon emissions from this plant so that we have way over 200 days, that's over 2/3 of the year where we have over warm temperatures, excessive extreme temperatures, I just, I think that this plant needs to be looked at from a safety and a health standpoint, and I don't support fracking at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comment. Anna Belcher, followed by Michael Yank.
So, thank you so much for your time tonight. I just want to kind of echo what everybody else is saying, basically that we need to be looking forward into the future and moving with the times and going forward with what the state and federal government are doing as far as moving toward renewables and not back to the past to natural gas and some other, you know, these things that cause global warming. But I do want to make one specific point about the EIR. It's my understanding that with regard to the South Coast Air Quality Management District, we're out of compliance with the PM10 particulate emissions, and there's no remaining emissions credits available. And the proposed plant would need to purchase credits at a rate of 1.2 to 1 in order to get an air permit from the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And that permit is necessary in order to start construction. You can't start construction until you have the permit. And so, but yet, the EIR states that the emissions offsets are envisioned to be purchased by the city as emissions reductions credits in the open market prior to the start of construction. So, it appears that that's inconsistent. I'd like to see GWP present the certificates for all necessary offsets for this plant prior to any additional funds being spent, since the project will not be able to be constructed without these currently unavailable offsets.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, Michael Yank, followed by Owen Lewis.
Hello. I'm a Glendale homeowner. I live off of Lake Street in Rancho Riverside, and I work at DreamWorks, so Grayson's basically my backyard. My wife and I have two small daughters, Addie and Callie. We love to take them to Griffith Manor Park, which is also down the street from Grayson. And the reason I'm here today is that I want my little girls to grow up breathing clean air. The pollution emissions created by the proposed Grayson expansion would affect them in their lungs every day. It's 2017, and renewables are getting cheaper every day, and I hope that when you make the decisions that will impact our beautiful city's air quality, you think about all the Addies and Callies out there on the swings at Griffith Manor Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your, excuse me, thank you for your comment. Now, Owen Lewis, Owen, are you speaking to item three or number—
Item three.
Item three, understood. Dick Bennett, followed by Leslie Lichtenstein. Do we have Dick Bennett? Leslie Lichtenstein? Pia Harris? David Eisenberg?
Yeah, somebody.
Oh, sorry.
Pia Harris.
Sorry, just a moment. Give us your name, please.
Yes, my name is Pia Harris. Good evening to everybody, Glendale residents, and I'm from a neighboring city, from Eagle Rock, and I come here to be a good neighbor. I have family and friends in Glendale. I come to church in Glendale, and I want good air quality. We've got to remember, health is wealth. And I am here to speak about cumulative impacts. The draft of the EIR discusses the additional 12-megawatt bio gas project proposed at the landfill. But the draft EIR does not consider the cumulative impacts of that project along with this proposed project. Under CEQA, cumulative impacts must be considered, especially since these projects are clearly related. Analyzing this project separately in a piecemeal fashion seems to be a way for GWP to have the project's impact stay below significance threshold. I want the impacts to our community from both this project considered at the same time. Note that if you do join these projects together, the total new megawatts being installed is above the 50-megawatts threshold for projects to go to the California Energy Commission for review, or the CEC. The CEC has experts in all of the areas of study, the air, water, socioeconomic impacts, noise, et cetera. These experts can catch many of the nuisance that we do not deal with these issues every day we meet, that may meet.
Eisenberg, followed by Bruce Salzer.
Good evening. My name is David Eisenberg. I've been a Glendale resident since, and homeowner since 1985. You know, we all like new stuff. We like new cars. We like new cell phones. We want the latest and greatest gadgets in our home. Everybody wants this, and we're look—I'm looking at this project, and I'm thinking, oh, everything's new. It's going to be better. And that's what I'm hearing from all the experts. This is going to be better, and it's new. And I don't know what we've already spent on this amount of study, because from the timeline, this has been going on for a couple of years, even though I've just heard about this recently. And so, you've got a significant investment, and it's like when you make a deposit on a new car, and then you find out that this car is accident-prone, but I've already put $1,000 on it, so I'm going to spend the other $20,000 so I don't lose my $1,000. And I'm afraid that that's something in the mindset. I was very reassured, by the way, to hear some of the questions that were asked by the Commission about some of the alternatives and the matrix and some of the ideas. I'm kind of curious, you know, why we didn't look at every available space that Glendale has, even if it be a small fraction. You've got that dump. Put solar panels on the dump while you're repowering it. Put it on the reservoirs besides the rooftop credits that you could do. Has anybody looked at, you're putting millions of dollars into this plant. What about putting some of that money into LED street lamps or, you know, other city lighting, going all to LEDs? It's an investment, but it wouldn't be as bad. Nobody really—I heard a couple of comments just touched on Griffith Park, but Griffith Park's right across the way. That's an area people are hiking and biking through that, and they're going to breathe more air. We just are building a—Glendale is—I don't know if you're familiar, the Glendale Park Department is building trails. There's a trail that goes right along Griffith Park. They're going to build a bridge across Glendale Wash, and they're going to continue to connect across the way to Griffith Park. So, this is supposed to be a major hiking and biking area, and now you're asking me to go through more pollutions. So, I'd like you to take a look, step back, say, maybe we spent this money, but maybe we can look at something else. Maybe we can do something partial, not spend so much, not do so much, and save things for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Salzer.
Good evening. I'm a long-term resident of Glendale. I have a few comments about the project milestones and then a couple of comments about the prior Commission discussion. I was actually notified via email about this through the Glendale Coalition. I'm a member of a group that gave them my email address, and I found out about it in that way. And I was thinking about how, when the—we had the hearings about the bullet train, there were mailings, there was a long-time discussion, and I'm thinking about, and piggybacking on what the prior gentleman just commented on, the recommendation to repower Grayson was in June 2015. We're talking about over two years later, and now we're talking about having two public meetings, one of which is this and another in three days. How is, you know, and I understand most people testified tonight or seem to be experts, they know this stuff. How is a member of the general public going to be able to process a 5,000-page EIR, all the materials we got this evening, and really be able to make meaningful kinds of comments and understand exactly what the impact is going to be? So, I'm concerned about whether the public as a whole in Glendale really knows what's going to be happening here and whether they are going to be given adequate information. With res—and in light of also some of the comments that you all made about even taking one issue of the reserve, it's pretty complicated. The complexity of this is mind-boggling in terms of all the various parts and how they all interrelate to one another. In terms of the discussion that you had before, I actually want to really compliment all of you for actually listening. I've testified before before the board supervisors, half the time they're, you know, and you all really are paying attention. You asked a lot of really good questions. And as some of the other gentlemen, individuals mentioned earlier, the question is, how is there a balance that can be found here potentially? And how can this be done thoughtfully? The answer I heard was, from the people that have presented the information to you, well, we've considered a set number of options. But when you really think about it, have they really considered all the possible permutations that you all could come up with to come up with a plan that would meet all the requirements that you really need to have? So, I guess my bottom-line urging is that you take the time necessary to make the right decision as opposed to maybe the most expedient decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, Bruce.
Madam Clerk, I have—do you have any further items for item 2A?
No, I do not.
Okay. Couple of comment cards for item three, but for 2A, then Commissioner comments? Any further comments from the Commission?
Just as a reminder, Mr. President, all previous comments were recorded and memorialized, and so we will treat those as questions, statements, and we will answer those as well. So, I only tell you that for expediency's sake, so those things don't have to be repeated unless you want to, of course, but we've got it all on record.
Understood. Thank you. Comments from the Commission?
No. Yeah, I've got a couple of things that I just want to kind of put on the table. The first is that I don't think a no-project alternative is a feasible project. At the end of the day, Steve mentioned the three factors that he's taking into consideration with regards to this project, the first being reliability, the second being environmental soundness, and the third being cost and cost consideration for our ratepayers. We're already living on borrowed time with regards to the existing Grayson Power Plant. We're already taking generating units offline, and I think that that's only going to have to continue in the near future. So, I—there needs to be a project. The question is, what project? The second comment that I want to make is that I—with regards to storage, you need to overprocure electricity in order to charge those batteries. So, you need the electron to meet your demand, and you need the electron to charge the batteries. If that battery is not being charged with a renewable electron, that's another fossil fuel that you're burning in order to charge those batteries, and that has all kinds of other environmental consequences that need to be taken into account. So, with regards to storage projects, I think that there is, there needs to be some consideration of where that second electron is coming from. Third point I want to make is that there—I don't think that there was enough exploration of in-basin solar as a part of the alternative considerations. I would like for this Commission and for GWP to continue to explore that and continue to push the envelope on in-basin solar generation. But at the end of the day, GWP has an obligation to keep the lights on. Hospitals require this. Anybody with, you know, medical equipment in their home requires this. We need to make sure that, you know, our seniors are able to turn on their air conditioning. We need to make sure that the very young are able to turn on their air conditioning. There are considerations that are beyond the ones that were raised here that need to be taken into account for the, this utility to be successful. There's been a lot of conversation in this debate and this discussion today about risk, and I think that anytime we are reliant on a single resource, whether that's solar, whether that's gas, whether that's wind, we are lacking a diversity in our resource pool that needs to be considered. So, I appreciate the members of the public who have come out to comment today, and I hope that you will continue your engagement with us and continue to push the envelope on all of the objectives that you laid out here. I want to suggest that if we—if this Commission is meeting 75 years from now and the plant, whatever it is, is still operating, they will have failed, and that they should be able to celebrate retiring 60 years prior. That is the hope, and a good deal of my career has been devoted to advocacy and policy development to displace fossil-generated electrons with renewable electrons. That work will continue regardless of how this project pans out. And the objective is to continue to push more of those fossil electrons out of the grid and replace them with renewable electrons. So, that's kind of the range of comments I want to offer, and I hope that that's incorporated in the EIR process, and I will—
Any other comments from the Commissioners?
Yeah. As I was listening to this, certainly this project delivers the electricity. So, if the only concern or if the only need that GWP was supposed to provide was electricity, that's fine. But a lot of the concerns here raise very good questions about what the public wants, and this is the public's money that we're going to be using to build this. So, we should incorporate everything that is needed and build a product or a service that's going to meet the need now, but also in the future. But the need is the definition of what is it that we need. And from what I'm hearing, they need smart choice. They need a comprehensive understanding of our general policy with regards to climate change and what have you, with regards to our need for electricity. Concern for children, especially the ones living next to Grayson Power Plant. I am concerned about the fact that, you know, you're going to offset some carbon with the emissions. That doesn't make any difference for the people living there. I would like very much more comprehensive understanding of how we can encourage rooftop solar through rebate system. That would be part of this generation system to me. So, definitely, we need electricity. We are at a position here, unfortunately, that we let everything run for 40-some years without building anything, and our options are limited. But to limit ourselves and continue down a path, it's not this path of solely gas-powered, I don't see that the right path. I think we should explore a more comprehensive approach and meet the need of the public who is going to pay for this, and it's their need is not just electricity. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kudikian, Commissioner Law, anything further?
Yeah, I would like to thank the remaining members of the public who are here this evening for engaging—
Your mic's off.
Sorry. Been a long night. I want to thank the members of the public who came out to engage in this process. Better projects result from a robust project, process like this, so thank you for being here. Thank you for your input. As the discussion has unfolded, I've thought about when I joined the Commission a couple of years ago and was taken on a very detailed tour of the facilities around the city. of years ago and was taken on a very detailed tour of the facilities around the city that provide us both with our water and our power. And I was really struck at that time by the long-range investment that had been made in those facilities. Some of them are 100-year, 100-years-old. The people who built those power facilities, those water facilities, were not thinking about a 15-year horizon. They were thinking about a 40, 50, or even longer horizon. They were really investing in the future of the city, and this is another opportunity where we, as a city, need to be thinking long-term. When we're thinking long-term, we can't just think about turning our lights on and off. As many of you have rightly pointed out tonight, we also need to think about the wider environment in which we live, and the fact that our climate has been profoundly disrupted by fossil fuel emissions. And that has to factor into our thinking as we engage in this process. And I want to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners, again, that air quality in this area is terrible. We have major freeways coming through the city with all of the associated emissions, and we also have an existing plant. I'm, I'm not opposed to the plant, I want to really give this more thought, but I do have these concerns, and, and I, I want these issues to be wrestled with as the project unfolds. And I do think, I do think we need to look at alternatives more robustly. I, I just don't feel satisfied that rooftop solar and other forms of distributed energy and storage have been fully fleshed out.
Thank you, Commissioner Law. Commissioner Avanesian, anything further?
One thing I want to add, that, you know, absolute green sometimes is not possible. You have to consider technical difficulties as well. So by my, I appreciate, you know, all the comments, but some of the comments, it comes from your, your heart, but you, you know, technically, sometimes I'm thinking it's impossible. Because you have to think about, for example, you say, okay, rooftop solar, then we'll have all this, and you can distribute this power. So technically, technically you have to have infrastructure to do that sort of things. So I don't want to repeat whatever we said here. This point that I'm adding is, sometimes the ideal thing that we want is not sometimes practicable, it's not practical. So we have to see the limitations. One of the biggest limitations is the transmission line. So we have to limit whatever we think green to this transmission line. Whatever you have there, you can bring it here. So this is something, a limitation there. So this limits, you know, the amount of green power that, that you can import. So we can't, we can't just like think utopian. So a combination of all this, I'm, I'm not repeating my suggestion, but it is, it is, there is a technical solution for combining all this, better than that one solution. That was my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Avanesian. So I'll just close by thanking the staff for, for your time, and especially as the, the lead agency for this SEQA process, this is a very important opportunity to hear from the, the commission as well as from the members of the public. Any folks who are unable to, to voice their opinion here and their, and their perspective here also have the opportunity to do so in writing through to November the 4th, close of business on November the 4th. And we have another meeting.
November 3rd. Just to be clear, it's November 3rd.
November 3rd is the deadline for submitting written, written comments. And, and then there's also a meeting coming up this, this coming Thursday, which is another opportunity. So very important opportunity to have that feedback incorporated into the draft EIR. So with that, we'll close, we'll close item number 2A. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Three, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The general manager may refer the matter to the appropriate staff for investigation.
Thank you very much. I have two cards. What I'd like to do is we'll limit, as we did with the earlier section, we'll limit public comment to three minutes per person. First is Caitlin McCowen. Do we still have Caitlin? Owen Lewis?
Owen Lewis, O-N-W-I-S. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to talk about a component of the Grayson Empower, Repowering Project that was sort of hinted at at the very beginning of the presentation, and that is the 12-megawatt bio-generation project. That project is mentioned in a notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration that is essentially a study done by consultants that says there's no need to have an environmental impact report on the 12-megawatt generation project to be located at the Shoal Canyon landfill. This project includes four generator sets that run on natural gas, V20 natural gas motors. Now, this document says that locating this generation project at Shoal Canyon is the only option because a pipeline that goes from Shoal Canyon to Grayson does not, does not comply with current regulations. That's my understanding. I, I think, what I have not seen is any study or, or of the feasibility of reconditioning that pipeline, or other alternatives that mitigate that problem. My understanding is that the pipeline doesn't meet standards for a pressurized pipeline. A simple solution to that is to put the pumps at the Grayson end. That makes the pipeline a giant straw that sucks, sucks gas out of the pipeline. That means you can put the generators at Grayson Power Plant. That means you don't have to build a 10,000-gallon domestic water storage tank, or a 60,000-gallon water storage tank for fire protection. I assume there's fire protection infrastructure at Grayson already, and a water main for domestic water. I assume there's also a ready supply of natural gas, which would eliminate the need to be, to build a .67-mile-long 12, a, a three-inch diameter gas line for this project. Other advantages to doing this at Grayson are less site preparation costs, you can drop these generators on the pavement there, operational labor costs, the, the labor, operational labor can be folded into labor that already exists at the Grayson Power Plant, or at least part of it can be. The decommissioning of the, of the pipeline cost would be eliminated. The transmission line maintenance that goes from the landfill to wherever bio, by the way, that's not mentioned, where that line goes, as it go to an LA power substation. If you put these generations, generators at Grayson, they can be hooked right into the distribution system for Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Mr. President, I may just add for the gentleman that he should be sure to get those comments in on the other environmental documents, so they're recorded that way as well. Unless, Christine, we can take the comments off of here and apply them?
You mean to the MND?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's open until 20.
Right. I just want to make sure his.
I think it's October 20th. October 20th. I think it's October 20th. Yes, yes, he should make those comments on that.
Right, so we can't pick them up off of here?
Correct. They will not be responded in this document.
So I just wanted to remind him of that, so he doesn't miss that opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
For adjournment.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very good, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.